Good evening and welcome to our twentieth meeting of fiscal year 2022. Let's introduce the planning board members. I'm Denny Swenson, Chair. Kathleen?
You're muted.
I'm actually on two meetings at the same time, so I'll be muting myself and trying to divide my brain in half.
Well, good luck with that one.
Yeah.
So you are Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell member.
Excellent. Cheryl?
Cheryl Taguayus member.
And Meredith?
Meredith Hall member.
And Tim?
Tim Jawwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And Allison, this is always fun.
Allison Quinn, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
Yes. Julia?
Julia Getman clerk.
Excellent. Okay. And Rich Beeler will be joining us momentarily, we hope. So Cheryl, did you want to approve the amendments to the January thirteenth meeting minutes?
Yeah, so I sent minutes or revisions to Tim. Did everyone get a chance to review them? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we captured the discussion on the central fire station site plan. So I'll make a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, the date again, Denny.
January thirteenth?
The January thirteenth meeting minutes as amended.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Cheryl Taguayus?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Denny Swenson, yes. Okay. Next, we have the A and R for 258 Reedstown Road. Tim, do you want to read?
Yeah, so you should have in your materials, there is a, an existing conditions plan and a sort of, or not an existing conditions plan, but a sort of a proposed subdivision plan and then a sort of proposed conditions plan for 258 Reedstown Road. This is a pretty straightforward A and R. We've got the applicant here, Todd Stone, his partner, Aaron, forgive me, I don't, I don't, I don't have your last name on my fingertips, and they've been working with Marion McCetrick, who authored a sort of a zoning opinion, kind of laying out the A and R kind of status. So I don't know if Marion, if you want to just take a quick two minutes, kind of summing up, you know, how this doesn't require subdivision approval, essentially.
Okay, so your requirements prior to approving an A and R lot are to determine or to be able to see that the lot has the required frontage, preferably frontage on a public way, and in this case, it's a corner lot and has frontage on two public ways, and that it has the required area. This is a C-zone, so lots are required to have 7,500 square feet. This lot has 15,008 square feet, just barely more than twice 7,500. And so, yeah, the requirement is basically, well, that the applicant needs to determine or try to ensure that there are no zoning non-conformities. That's kind of a planning board requirement in Milton. So that's why I wrote this letter and reviewed some of the considerations for zoning conformity, because there is an existing house on this lot. And if you were to subdivide the lot and the house had an existing non-conformity, you might have to go back and get a variance from the Board of Appeals in order to do the subdivision. So there's a certified plot plan that you have in front of you, and the certified plot plan measures, of course, the area of the lot, the frontage of each lot available on each public way, and then it also measures the existing setback for the house, which is 28.8 feet. There are two measurements for lot setback. One is 30% of the mean depth of the lot, and the other one is 30 feet. It's whichever one is less. So in this case, the requirement is 30% of the mean depth of the lot, 27. Let me just go down to my discussion. Mean depth of the lot is 90 feet. 30% of 90 is 27 feet, and this lot, this is a setback in excess of 27 feet. So it just barely meets that setback requirement. The frontage requirements, 20 feet in either direction, the existing house has a setback of more than 20 feet. There's no house, of course, on the new lot, and in order to build a house on this lot, all of the existing zoning requirements would have to be followed. So the footprint of a house, you don't show it on an A and R lot, but it would have to have a front setback of 20 feet, rear setback 30 feet, or one-third of the mean depth of the lot, and side setbacks of 10 feet. The applicant has said that he intends to remove the garage. And trying to remember considerations. These aren't really zoning considerations. I pointed out to the applicants that there's definitely a large rock on the new lot, and they're going to have to deal with some ledge removal. I pointed out that the town has an existing demolition, an existing blasting bylaw. If they have any intention of blasting rock, and preferably they won't do it that way, they are going to have to follow that bylaw. I don't do a wetlands analysis. I didn't see anything that suggested wetlands, but that's something that they should also look at. And of course, this lot has access to public water and public sewer, so it does not, there does not need to be a septic system on the lot. There may be straw mortar drainage requirements, and they will need to comply with those as well. And so that's a very quick summary of the characteristics of the lot, and I'll be here to answer any other questions that you may have. I just want to mention that at 7:30, I have to go to a conservation commission meeting. So hopefully, if you have questions about the zoning, you'll ask me now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I did have one question. I've actually never had this with a structure that's within the setbacks. Is it something that you just say approval with the agreement that the structure will be taken down?
No, the structure doesn't have to be taken down. The structure on the new lot is at, it meets the zoning bylaw. And the structure on the new lot, like any new building, will have to meet all the zoning requirements for a new building.
Oh, okay. Because I thought that garage that was coming down was coming down because it was out of, but it's, but it's, it's within compliance, but it's just coming down anyway.
Well, it is coming down. So, so the point is, this application still shows it because it exists, but the garage will be taken down. I think with, well, I'm not going to suppose, you know, what the intentions of the developer are, but the garage is coming down.
So, so we don't need to do the approval pending that, you know?
No, it's outside of the A and R. All we're looking at is its approval, not required plan. It's not a subdivision plan. We're not the zoning board. Whether they can build something on it is their problem going forward, not ours. And seriously, what we would be looking at is whether it meets the requirements for an A and R plan. And Marion's letter was very helpful to outline the fact that it does comply.
And you usually have a note on your A and R plans that it, that A and R approval does not, I forget what the wording is, but doesn't determine.
Does not determine buildability or whatever.
Right.
Right. Okay, so that will go on there. All right. Anyone want to make a motion? Or do you really want to discuss it?
Before you make that motion, if you could just make sure you authorize me to sign on behalf of the board.
I did remember that.
Okay, so I guess we could hear a motion, and then we can discuss it, and then.
Well, don't you want to ask if anybody has anything to say about it?
Sure.
Just in case.
We could discuss it now and discuss it then.
I do have a question. I'm not sure we've had this where, you know, this, this curb cut that's required on Reedstown. What's our formal process for requesting curb cuts? Is it through, does DPW wins or just directly through the inspection services?
No, it's, it's, well, I, my understanding of the curb cut approval process is that it is, the application goes to the DPW. It used to have to be approved by the select board. I honestly am not sure whether that still is the case, but years ago. Do you know, Tim?
Yeah, I think the bylaw is still technically worded that way, but I think the select board has largely kind of delegated that authority to DPW. It's actually a three-part process. You'll all be very interested to know that for a driveway permit, there's sign off from engineering. Engineering makes sure that there's no drains, fire hydrants, utility poles, where the curb is supposed to go. Inspection services will take a look at it for pavement requirements in the setback, and then I look at it to make sure that we're not dealing with a scenic road. So there's sort of a three-layer approval process for that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone want to discuss further? Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the A and R plan, which I don't have in front of me, to give the precise name for.
258 Reedstown Road.
258 Reedstown Road, and to authorize our planning director to sign the plan on behalf of the board.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Cheryl Taguayus?
Aye.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swenson, yes. Can we move Rich Beeler into our group? I thought I saw him.
Todd, we'll be in touch whenever you can bring a Marler plan into the office. We'll get it signed and have you on your way.
Beautiful. Thank you very much for your help, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you, thank you, Marion.
Danny, I'm in the meeting.
Oh, good. Nice to see you, Rich, from far away, right? Okay, next on our agenda, we have our public hearing for the accessory dwelling unit article for Wintertown meeting. And just to quickly review, I thought I would just explain that first, I'll acknowledge letters, then I'll welcome each planning board member to speak, and Kathleen can go first. I don't know if she wants to present anything, but she's welcome to. Then we'll open it up to the public and give each member of the public who wants to speak the opportunity to speak, and we'll close the public hearing, and then planning board will have their discussion. So first, to acknowledge the letters, as of today, I counted 33 letters sent to the planning board. But there may have been more coming in later in the day, but on the planning board page, you can click on the zoning articles, and you'll find a link to accessory dwelling unit comments. Because there were over 30 letters, I will not have time to read each of them into the public record, but please do go to the planning board website to see all of those letters. 26 of letters were challenging aspects of the ADU article, while seven letters were supporting aspects of the ADU article, mainly affordability, diversity in housing stock, and providing a housing need. In addition to those letters, we received three letters from groups. The Equity and Justice for All Committee wrote a letter in support of the ADU article. There were two petition letters with many signatories. One was from Elaine Benson, representing a group supporting the ADU article. The other was from the Milton Neighborhood Coalition, recommending the article get sent back for further study. I'm hopeful that someone from each of those groups will be able to speak tonight during public comment. Trends that sort of jumped out in the individual letters for me. 25 letters stated that they want special permit as opposed to as a right. Five letters stated the opposite. 15 letters basically said they like the temporary apartment bylaw already in place, and/or they want to keep the language geared toward family members, like the temporary apartment bylaw does. Two letters stated the opposite, and a couple expressed interest in rental income as an option. Other topics, nine letters complained about process. People wanted more time, more transparency. Some said they felt unheard in the process. Seven letters stated concerns about enforcement. Eight letters stated concerns over impact on schools and town services, or requested further study in that area. Other concerns noted, people were afraid of the cap getting lifted. Some were concerned with potential impact or need to create more affordable to get out from under the aggressive threat of 40B developers. I also wanted to note that throughout the letters, themes jumped out at me. Housing choice is great. Economic use of housing stock is great. Haging in places is great. Diversity in housing stock is great. Historic preservation is great. I mean, these are things that I think most people would agree with most of those statements. So those, those sort of things jumped out at me. So you can see those letters on our, on our website. So I thought we could just do a quick reminder of Robert's Rules of Order decor during debate. This rule stresses that during debate or discussion, we combine our, confine our questions and comments to the agenda item, this accessory dwelling unit article before us. It's not allowable to arraign the motives of a member or citizen, but the nature or consequences of a measure may be challenged. So basically, it's not the person, but the measure that's subject to debate. So as we all know, civil discourse is so important for good government, and topics like this are very important, so we want to be very thoughtful of one another. I also wanted to announce an upcoming date. We have so many people here interested in this ADU topic. I just wanted to let the public know that we received a citizen article amending the temporary apartment bylaw. We will be having a public hearing on that on March 3rd. So I thought each member could speak for a few minutes before we open it up to the public. And I thought Kathleen might like to go first, since she's been shepherding this one along.
Thank you. I would first ask the Chair to disclose her association with the Milton Neighborhood Coalition. And also ask a question about what the Milton Neighborhood Coalition actually is.
Oh, sure. I'm sure, as, as you know, because I've disclosed this.
Exactly.
I'm on that, I was a founding member of the Milton Neighborhood Coalition years ago. I was the president of my neighborhood association, and number of neighborhood association leaders got together. And we used to meet and, and talk about various topics and, and so on. So we were kind of an informal support group, if you will. So I'm sorry, what was the second question?
Well, just, it was interesting. And when I have to disclose, when I, we have Doug Henry, that I'm a chair, the president of the Abstract Club, I have to explain what the Abstract Club is. And I was curious, because I went on to find out what this Milton Neighborhood Coalition actually is, and I couldn't find anything. I couldn't find that, or any, or a lot of these neighborhood associations, I couldn't find anything like bylaws or, you know, registration, you know, at the registry. You know, I couldn't find anything on all of them. So I was interested to find out more history of the coalition, and that's why I asked the question.
Oh, sure, sure. Well, thank you for your interest. No, it's like an association of neighborhood association leaders, basically. So neighborhood leaders, we haven't gotten together in the last year because of the pandemic, but we used to meet in the church basement for many years. So thank you for your interest, Kathleen. Okay.
So I did watch the warrant committee meeting where you presented the article, and I have to say that I was kind of surprised at the characterization that we had only looked at this since November, since I've gone through all of my drafts. And I, we started talking about amending the bylaw, either the temporary apartment one or a new accessory dwelling unit, for at least a year. And it's been on the agenda, not always reached on the agenda because of other things, but it's, it's been something that has been posted on our website since August. And I think the reason for this sort of last-minute kind of flurry of amendments and things like that was part of the directed effort by the Chair to me to work with former member of the planning board, Mr. Whiteside, on, on a draft that would be a compromise. And it became clear, as we went through December, that a compromise really wasn't possible. Because I favor, as do many others, as a right, if the house does not need any changes, and a special permit if it does. And in some cases, obviously, you're going to need a variance too, because so much of our housing here in Milton is not in compliance with existing zoning. And this accessory dwelling unit doesn't change that situation. So as I said, we couldn't reach, we couldn't reach a compromise. We did, you know, I did put in a cap as a compromise, recognizing comments made by, by members of the public concerned about the number of these that could be built in a given year. And we did put that cap in. We had, did hear from various, the Equity and Diversity Committee and various. We had, did hear from various, the Equity and Diversity Committee, and various other members of the public, that they weren't happy about the cap, because they were concerned about the fact that, you know, more people with cash would get on the line first, and, you know, if you come in later, you wouldn't be able to build the unit, build your accessory dwelling unit. But that's a discussion for town meeting. It's, it's in there, it's in there now, and, you know, going into the future. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that suddenly these accessory dwelling units are going to be impacting our count for forty Bs. I would mention to people that we've spent, you know, thirty-five years or forty years since Chapter Forty B was first adopted, and didn't do anything. And so, and opportunities for housing presented itself at the, at the town farm. The Hendry's property was originally going to be a forty B rental, where all those units would have counted. Now it's, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars condominiums with a couple of affordables. And all of those discussions, like Ford Ranch Road, and other kinds of the Pulte Properties, people have talked about, you know, there's some sort of toss off to affordable housing, but not, you know, not a major commitment. And so I think the worry about accessory dwelling units is misplaced. And affordability has many definitions. It's not just the subsidized housing inventory, and protecting yourself from forty B applications. It's actually trying to provide a diversity of housing for many of the people in our town. Cheryl sat in on the bid, you know, Milton, you know, session this afternoon, and, and it was scary to think about the number of people in the percentage of the population in Milton that were concerned about paying their bills, you know, keeping their properties in town, you know, being able to manage. It's, it was, it was, it was very sad. So this accessory dwelling unit, as I said, is meant to provide a diversity of housing, meant to provide help for families, meant to provide help for seniors, and, you know, on occasion, you could rent it to somebody you are not related to. And, and I would hope that people would be receptive to the idea of going to town meeting and having it discussed in a, in a public forum where it should be. And I'm here to answer questions, and make further statements, but that's my statement for now.
Okay, thank you. I, I think good people can disagree, but I, I looked at my notes, and my understanding is that there was some mention, we did talk here and there at the end of a couple of meetings, I, I did put the winter zoning articles on the agenda at least sixteen times. So we did have every intention of getting to it, but I, I recall, as you do, that we tried to get to it, and it did, and we weren't able to a number of times. I did note that there was some discussion in August, but my first drafts, I, were in November. I, I didn't see any drafting. I'm not saying there wasn't drafting going on, and you may have been doing drafting, but I, I didn't, I didn't think it was presented to the whole Planning Board until November. But may, maybe I missed something, but I, I, I wanted to sort of, you know, express that, you know, these, the, we have a lot of competing values, and, and I think that a carefully crafted ADU article can help, you know, do some of those wonderful things that we've been talking about, aging in place, you know, housing choice, diversity in housing stock, historic preservation of some of our older houses. I, I think these things are all very doable, and I think with a carefully crafted ADU article, we can get there. I, I just feel like there's some, some more work to be done. I think some of the enforcement language, the parking in the C-zone, I think, given the feedback that we've been getting from the public, the as-of-right versus the special permit discussion, working through the idea of, with the public, about having ADUs geared toward family and caregivers, versus creating them for open market rate rental use, which seems to me will not aid in affordable housing. So I, I just feel like family, caregivers, needs-based would make more sense to me than, you know, having a older widow, or, or a family that's dealing with a, a child that's, you know, had an accident, been in, you know, recently disabled, you know, needs to come home. I, I just don't want them to have to compete with a real estate investor, or, you know, that, that, that world. They, they just can't compete that easily. So I think, I think that we just have some competing values, but I think we all agree that ADUs are wonderful, and they can be great. And, you know, I was looking at the Pioneer Institute report, and they have ADUs, you know, it's something like thirty towns have ADUs where they have special permits, and thirty towns have ADUs where they have as-of-right. It's just sort of trying to figure out which town, you know, which, which one works for our town. So I, I do feel like we spent a lot of time over the last year and a half agreeing that aging in place is great, and saying that, you know, maintaining these houses and protecting these houses through doing ADUs is great, providing housing options is great. We, we talked about all the easy stuff, but I just feel that it wasn't really until December, when the public started pouring in, that we really got a handle on the as-of-right versus special permit issue, and the open market rate rental use versus family and caregiver use, you know, those that just came, came to be an issue. And then the enforcement language is always tricky. Zoning is very hard to write, but it's, it's been a really challenging, it's been a really challenging one. So, so I, I look forward to hearing from the citizens tonight about any, any topics that they would like.
Rich has his hand up.
Oh, yes, Rich, would you like to go next, Rich? We can't hear you, can you unmute?
Sorry, no, it took me a second, my screen went blank, I couldn't unmute. No, I, I'm sorry, I just, I, I know you said you were going to go around the table, and it sounds like that's what you're doing, but just logistic wise, I'm, so I don't want to go next, I want to wait till after the public has a chance to talk. I just, just for what it's worth, I know, I just, I'm hoping that we can kind of set, like, kind of the agenda before we get into it. I felt like last meeting, it got a little, like, like every time one person would speak, and then it would open up dialogue about it, and then another person would speak, and we opened up lots of dialogue about it. And that went on for a lot of hours, and I felt like it was very confusing for the public, very confusing for the board. And I'm kind of hoping that we could kind of go back to, because what we normally do is we'll open up for the public, we'll hear everything, we'll close it, and then we'll deliberate. And I just want to make, because I just don't want to have point counterpoint, because that could go on for hours and hours, and I'm just, you know, technically, the reason why we're here tonight was a technicality. And I'm okay with opening it back up and giving, obviously, the public a chance to comment, and us to redeliberate. But the reality is, we're here because of last meeting, there was a technicality, and we were going to revisit. And like I said, I'm absolutely open for re-discussion. I just want to make sure we have, we have a good agenda for that discussion. Hopefully that makes sense.
That's fine, I, I think, I, I think we're going to go around the circle, then we're going to open up to the public, and then we're going to close the public hearing, and then we're going to talk as a board. Does that sound good? All right.
Yep.
So I don't know if, if Meredith or Cheryl wanted to go next?
I guess I can go. And then, I guess, I would just like to begin by stating that I am not opposed to an ADU. An ADU can be a very good thing, and I think we can all say that I believe we agree on the board on the goals of this ADU. However, I don't believe this article as written would be good for Milton. I think a few items in particular should be made clear to residents. ADUs, first, ADUs are not necessarily affordable units, and should not be referred to as such. They are market rent, and any price a homeowner wants to charge can be, can be done. There is no price capping required to maintain affordability. I have actually stated on many occasions that I would support an affordable ADU article, as is being worked on by Kathleen in Lincoln. Therefore, not only are these units not affordable, they would add to our housing inventory, setting us back further from reaching our ten percent affordable housing, and preventing forty, future forty B. I would like to see an article that prioritizes senior citizens, and not to the investor for profit. Second, I think it's really important to address our timeline, and why it is too quick to send to the town meeting floor. Although the concept of ADU has been discussed over the last year, and due to, and even though, due to a very, very busy agenda, with meetings discussing important items, such as the memory clinic and four forty Granite, it was put on the agenda, the ADU article was put on the agenda all throughout the summer and fall, and where it was frequently reported by Kathleen, who's been kind enough to work on this, and we're grateful for that, she reported that it was not quite ready for her final draft. It was not until the draft, the final draft of, the draft of the ADU concepts, and it wasn't even all the language, the draft of ADU concepts was not even ready to be presented until November thirtieth. The actual, and, which is why I actually, and I think there was some confusion on why there was a four to one vote, because we had not even seen the language, we'd only seen the concepts. So I voted in favor of continuing to see what the language would be, and if we could come together in agreement, and that's why I voted it forward. But it was not until the, the actual language of the article was even ready to begin our discussion on our board until December. This has left just one month for us, that, that left just one month for us to have a meaningful discussion. Thus, we ended up changing the article for the better, which caused for it to be out of scope, and now requiring us to have tonight's public hearing. Two months has hardly been time for an in-depth conversation, and I believe there's still work to be done to improve this article on behalf of our town. There are still many aspects that are unclear, such as how a by-right ADU might be enforced. For example, if violations occur, such as the required minimum occupancy by an owner or tenant. Unlike special permit, which can be taken away, how is, how is this to be handled if someone has an ADU by right? In essence, it can't be taken away, even if it is, even if there is a violation. There is no clear language on parking requirements, which would impact our more congested neighborhoods. And for more, what does by-right mean to our single-family zoning? I think that's a question that we have to ask ourselves. It is essentially allowing every house to become a two-family. Lastly, a study, excuse me, a study by Needham on, on ADUs in other towns, has been frequently referred to. And what I think, what I think is important coming out of that study, is actually what Needham decided to do for their own ADU. It requires the following. It requires that it is done by special permit, it is for relatives and family members, and it is a cap of ten. I completely agree with all of these provisions, and would support just such an ADU. I believe our current article is extremely controversial, and would not be, be the right ADU for our town. Thus, I do not support sending it to town meeting. I think our Planning Board needs to consider all current development. We have potentially five hundred units of forty B apartments and condos coming online, not including the Hendry's, and a new potential development at four forty Granite Avenue. We now know, as a Planning Board, there's legislature that will require potentially two thousand additional multifamily housing units to be zoned in Milton. Zoning is a very important consideration, and I think we need to, we need to go into this, thinking of the balance, what is appropriate for Milton, and make sure that there is not excessive development, and that we take this very, very carefully into consideration.
Thank you, Meredith. Cheryl?
I, I would like to make note that we have a professional staff, we're lucky. We didn't have a professional staff when zoning was enacted in this town in nineteen thirty-eight. And our staff, I think, provides us with excellent, not only their credentials, and guiding the meetings and so forth, but they provide us with guidance, and I really would like to hear from our staff tonight. They've provided us with memos in December, memos this week, and, and I'm sure that they fielded phone calls and questions from you folks on the board, mine, and other people in the public. So I, I just really, I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, because I want them, I want them to have an opportunity to speak. And as I've been shuffling my papers around here, I'm, I'm missing a piece of paper, I'm going to find it here, that I, that I care, that helped me organize thoughts, and I, and I hope it will help others, including those in the public. And I, I want to at least identify a few things, because I've heard from a number of people, I've seen social media, I think there's, there's lots of questions out there, but some, there's also some inaccuracies out there. So I would just like to go through some of the, the facts of, of what this article does, and I want to give a little bit of feedback on why we're doing it, so if you all indulge me for a few minutes on that. I just want to, to point out that when I joined this board in, in two thousand and fifteen, I have records where we were talking about modifying the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, or the temporary apartment bylaw. So ADUs are not new to Milton, we have what's called a temporary apartment bylaw, and though that bylaw allows these temporary apartments to be located in single-family homes, or in separate structures such as a garage or a barn. It limits who can live in these, to the owner of the home, or a family member of the owner, or an employee of the owner, such as a caregiver. They have, currently have to be approved through a special permit process, and there's some, some pretty strict requirements around them, around getting them permitted. According to the research that was done for the Housing Production Plan, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty, both by the Planning Board and the Select Board, which sets forth housing strategies and a vision for housing in Milton. If any of you have not seen that, it's, it's a wealth of information contained in there, not only about a vision, but the statistics, there's some very interesting statistics. That document says we have twenty-eight of these currently. I'm sure people, some people may not know that they exist, but there's undoubtedly more that are not permitted. The other thing that our current zoning allows is renting of your house to anyone without any process. It allows renting a portion of your house to lodgers, boarders, or paying guests, and there's no, no, there's no regulation around that either. Now, as to the need, the, as I said, the Housing Production Plan has a lot of data. Milton's population, just like the countries, is aging, and currently, over twenty percent of our population is over age sixty-five. Lot of data, a lot of research has been done, most people age sixty-five and over want to stay in the community that they live in. Increasingly, and particularly in older communities, our homes are not designed for aging in place. Many of them have lots of stairs, they're on multiple levels, and they have other things that make it difficult with mobility challenges. Additionally, our household, our average household sizes are shrinking. In fact, twenty percent of all households in Milton are single-person households, with projections of that growing to twenty-six percent by two thousand and thirty. A single-person household in a single-family house is likely overhoused. Our housing stock is increasingly out of sync with these changing demographics. Additionally, household income has stagnated, while median home prices and rents have exploded. Our real estate taxes continue to rise, and that places a burden on those on fixed incomes. And our young adults cannot afford to return, or stay in, in the town that they grew up in. All of this data and more is in that Housing Production Plan, which is developed on the town's website. So great communities provide housing opportunities for people of all ages, incomes, and abilities, allowing everyone to live in a quality neighborhood regardless of their circumstances. So what does this ADU do in terms of providing benefits? So what does this ADU do in terms of providing benefits? It provides homeowners with more options. They can downsize while staying on their property and they can live in the ADU. They can house a caretaker, they can house their children or parents. Or, one of the things that we're talking about here is to gain an extra source of income by renting out the ADU. This provides less expensive housing choices as well. It can help seniors stay in their community and age in place. It can provide options for low and moderate income residents. And it can provide smaller housing options to meet the needs of empty nesters, smaller families, and young adults. It would make it easier for people who work in Milton to live here, such as teachers, firefighters, and nurses. This kind of development is small and incremental. It doesn't require the development of open space. It doesn't require these large new construction projects. New infrastructure is not needed. It is gentle density, designed and maintained by the homeowners themselves. This allows for more compact infill development that promotes more walkable, car-like, car-like neighborhoods. For permitting, units within existing house would be allowed as of rights. While units within an addition. Or in a garage, carriage house, or barn are required to receive a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So that's what's in this proposed by law. I, I asked Marion McKeatrick, who's an attorney who has represented homeowners pursuing temporary apartments. How many of those that she had been involved in required an addition or were in a separate detached structure? Or how many were in an existing home? And of about the 12 that she's been involved in, only one was in with within an existing home. So when we think about how many of these we can permit within an existing home and how many? There's a lot of people who are concerned about how many of these may get built overall. There is a cap in this zoning proposal of 10 units per year. Regardless of whether they're in the existing home or whether they would be something requiring an addition or a separate structure requiring a special permit. Under the current zoning, now let's talk about notice and neighborhood neighbor input. The protections for neighbors currently in our zoning are our dimensional standards. There's no requirement to notify your neighbor if you're going to build a house or build an addition or a garage or other structure unless you need a variance. This by law requires a special permit process. That's more strict than what is required of any single-family dwelling currently. And occupancy, the owner must live on the property. So it is the owner who is deciding to do this. If a developer comes in, the developer can't necessarily say they're going to rent these out. It's two parcels because the owner has to live here. So either the ADU or the main house need to be occupied by the owner. And the other could be occupied by a non-owner or it could be rented out. Ownership must remain with the owner. It is accessory. It cannot be turned into a condominium. The size of the units cannot be more than 900 square feet or half the size of the primary house, whichever is smaller. And it can't be less than 500 feet. It can't have more than two bedrooms. Other restrictions include no short-term rentals are allowed. The ADU is terminated on sale unless the new owner signs an affidavit of owner occupancy and files it with the building commissioner. The design must keep the appearance of a single-family residence. There's lots of data. There's lots of research. This has been something, ADUs have been something people have been working on for a long time. I shared some links with and files with my fellow board members in the fall regarding ARP. And ARP's work on ADUs. The state, the smart growth toolkit that they have, the Cape Cod towns, and more. Many towns are currently looking at easing their restrictions, just as Milton is. And there's a lot of data available and the planning board and the planning department could share that with people who are interested. Those are my comments for now.
Thank you. And Tim, did you want to speak for a few minutes before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, thank you. So Cheryl made made a lot of good points referencing the Housing Production Plan. You know, this has been. The the suggestion to reconsider, amend, change the 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 temporary apartment by law. It dates back almost two decades in terms of housing production plans that the town has has put together. And the, you know, the the three things that have been consistent throughout the recommendations in the housing production plans has been. Eliminating the requirement that the occupant be a family member. Extend the use to detached structures or separate additions. And explore an amnesty program to allow legal apartments to receive appropriate permits. All of those things at some point or another have been a part of this. This draft, some have been negotiated and compromised away. There have been other things that are kind of novel and not necessarily specifically called out in the Housing Production Plan. But, you know, this has been a long discussion about housing options in in Milton. You know, by law that we're talking about tonight, actually, you know, the 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 immediate genesis wasn't November or August or whenever, it was actually the annual town meeting in May. Where the planning board had an article that was sort of pulled at the last minute. So it's, it's been a long conversation, both in kind of absolute terms and in kind of, you know, recent history terms. The the thing that I I think is really important to underscore is. The the Housing Production Plan is is the town's guide for for housing strategy, both for affordable housing, but also addressing all of the other various housing issues that we have. Amending and liberalizing the ADU by law is is literally the smallest impact. Easiest thing to do in that plan. Everything else is harder and everything else has higher impact. So, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, interesting and I think valid points that have been made on on both sides of this conversation. But it doesn't get easier if we want to actually address the housing problems that we have in Milton. Which I think Cheryl kind of outlined, you know, some of the statistics that are in the Housing Production Plan. You know, 30% of of Milton residents are cost burdened, which means that they spend more than 30% of their income on housing. You know, the median earner in town still is $140,000 away from being able to afford the median house on the market. And those numbers are old. Wages have not gone up nearly as much as as housing prices have. So, you know, it it really is something that, you know, it's, it's really good to have. You know, a really rigorous and spirited debate. But, you know, ADUs are supposed to be, okay, let's do this and let's kind of put our shoulder to the wheel on some of the harder items. You know, the 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 question of affordable housing, and I'll use the term capital A affordable housing, which is subsidized, deed restricted affordable housing. This is 40B is about. And the question of kind of lowercase a affordable housing, which is housing that is just cheaper than what we've got right now. These are two very separate questions. We are not going to inclusionary zone our way out of our 40B obligations. You know, we're getting four units out of Hendrys, we're getting a handful of units out of Walcott Woods and Woodmere. You know, those are really barely keeping our heads above water. It really is the 40B projects. And, you know, if we can figure out a way to get some, some, some numbers out of town-owned property. Or actually attract some mission-based housing developers to town, that's how we're going to get out from under 40B. You know, in the meantime, we can't really hold ourselves hostage to that of solving our other problems. And so what ADUs represent is what we call naturally occurring affordable housing. You know, it is market rate, but, you know, definitionally, a 900-foot, one-bedroom ADU. Is going to rent for cheaper than a three-bedroom house. It just, that's just the market. And so while it's not deed restricted and it doesn't count towards our subsidized housing inventory, it really meets a need. That we have. I I sent some information to the board earlier. I won't really kind of go through it, you know, in in really any sort of intense fashion. The the research that we have, both academically and some quick and dirty kind of research I did on temporary apartments, shows that there's no property value impact. ADUs, the house that builds a temporary apartment goes up in value. The neighbors don't go down in value. Everyone goes up in value in Milton. And that's because the real estate fundamentals of Milton are such that it's a highly desirable town. Single-family housing stock is a precious resource in the entire region. It is an extraordinarily high demand. There's no, there's no swimming against that tide. Property values go up for the foreseeable future. And so, you know, the concern about negative impacts on property values, I think, are are. Are unfounded and really shouldn't be a concern. The 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 idea of, and and this goes back to the Housing Production Plan, you know, I definitely understand, you know, the desire to sort of take care of people in Milton. The Housing Production Plan says that there's definitely a need for people in town to have this type of housing. But limiting, limiting residency to family members is inherently exclusionary. It says if you're not already in, you can't come in. You know, and so to be a sort of a welcoming community that, you know, wants people to sort of experience the opportunities that Milton has. You really can't kind of pull that ladder up. You know, it also limits the income generating potential. If you've got a senior on a fixed income that wants to build an ADU in order to supplement their income. If they don't have any family members to live in that thing, they're kind of out of luck. And so it really kind of does work across purposes to what the Housing Production Plan, you know, contemplates. You know, we we proposed a cap because there was a concern, a concern which I I also don't think is very well-founded, that we would be inundated with these applications. The overwhelming amount of evidence that we have from not just peer communities, but every community has adopted ADUs in the Commonwealth is that. It would, it would be shocking if we got even 10 applications in a year. People needed the assurance that we wouldn't, and so there's a cap there. And now that cap now creates a different type of friction where, you know, we're concerned about seniors and 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 other sort of low-income folks being boxed out by. You know, more savvy opportunistic developers. These are arguments against the cap. The cap is what's creating that friction. So I think folks that are kind of making that argument need to reconcile the fact that. You know, maybe the cap isn't as necessary. If you look at the Newtons and the Lexington's and the Concord's and the Medfords of the of the world and and, you know, these, these are towns that are getting. Two, three, four, five in a good year, applications. And and in that way, you know, if 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 there really is an issue where if we get 11 applications and the 11th one is a fixed income senior. Then we still have the flexibility to sort of give that person their permit. The the final thing that I'll say is, you know, again, that the Housing Production Plan, which has been adopted by the planning board, which has been adopted by the town as it's. My my five minutes is up apparently, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there.
You can finish your sentence.
I, I, the the question that the planning board needs to answer is, do we want to promote these things or not? And I think the more hurdles that you place in the way procedurally, the fewer applications you're going to get, the fewer of these things you're actually going to see be built. And so if if we're serious about promoting them, we want to make them happen and and sort of the by right way is is the way to do that. I I think that the existing zoning regulations that we have, which are underneath every ADU application, setbacks, height. You know, paved area, you know, all of this stuff still applies to ADUs. These provide the same protection for an ADU as they do a garage or a dormer or a deck or anything. And so if there's really a concern that those aren't provided the needed protection and we need to have a special permit process. Maybe we should also think about amending some of those dimensional requirements, which would solve the underlying problem. So thanks for, thanks for the opportunity to come in here.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. All right, so let's see. Tim, you had mentioned that there there might be. Someone from Ayanna Pressley's office. Do you see her in here? I I don't, but if she comes, if you could let me know, just shoot me a text.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think what I was, sorry, Denny, what I would say, if if I I know that there's been interest from from some elected officials in this hearing. So, you know, if those folks want to identify themselves and say hi, that would be great.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, all right, I'm not seeing any hands, but we may hear from them later. Oh, okay. Chris Westfall. Good evening. Chris Westfall, I didn't know if you were going to speak for a moment.
Hi, yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I I just want to say I'm I'm here from Rep. Flugrople's office, just here to listen and learn, and thank you for.
Well, thank you for joining us. Welcome from Milton.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let's see, Georgia Lee. Good evening, Georgia, and I would like to disclose that I'm on the garden club with Georgia. Good evening, Ms. Lee. Tim, are you able to help her over?
Hi, Denny. I needed to unmute me.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'm happy to do camera on if that works for you or I can just talk.
I I guess just talk for now. I I don't know if we can do camera.
No worries. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to start out by saying that I agree with Meredith on every point that she made, especially her point about prioritizing affordable housing. Kathleen made a similar point. She said that the ADU proposal would diversify our housing stock. However, I don't think the document enforces that point, and Meredith's suggestion seems to underscore Kathleen's idea while ensuring that developers who are motivated by easy profits do not get to develop parcels by right. So I think the document could be stronger to accomplish the goals that Kathleen and Meredith both agree are important. One of the big worries that I have is that the ADU proposals that I've seen to date. Seem to assume that homeowners. That the ADU is designed to serve are Milton families. But there's a trend in which Wall Street is buying houses in suburban neighborhoods. And I'm going to send a letter to the committee, which has several articles about this point. But we're already seeing outside investment come to Milton. And my worry is that this sweetens the pot for investors who just want to make money in our town. And so I think that's something we need to think carefully about. I think we may need to make sure that if. It's not a Milton family that's trying to capitalize on ADU, but instead an outside investor. How do we handle that? Can we handle that inside this document? Because that's not what we're trying to do, and that's not the people who we're trying to help. And I'm going to go ahead and send this letter, but thank you for taking the time to listen.
And then, excuse me, can we just ask Ms. Lee to provide her address, please?
Sure, I'm on Highland Street. The number is 59.
Thank you, Georgia. Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. So the the next in line is Ms. Linda Champion. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. Hi, good evening. So I guess I've participated in a lot of the ADU meetings over the past few months. I think that for me, I hear a lot of code talking among the Milton residents. But what it comes down to, based on the proposal that I hear you making, specifically as you guys keep continuing to reference Milton families. Milton is 73.1% white. Milton has a history of steering. Milton has a history of a no sign policy, which was specifically and strategically designed. So that families and people of color would not know which properties were available for them to purchase. The, the, the data speaks for itself in that most of the minority families who were able to purchase in Milton as a result of your practices back in the 70s. Resulted in most of the families of color being limited to census tract B. So when you start to characterize the use of ADUs for Milton-only families. What I hear you saying is that those families, many of whom are white. You are creating and maintaining a race-restricted policy. And you're doing it by by design. And I take offense that we vote in elected officials and you are using your power, which has strategically been done. and you are using your power, which has strategically been done by this Planning Board over many years, intentionally to limit access of housing to people from other spaces. So I would ask that the characterization of those letters that were cited, you went through great detail to describe the letters that challenged the ADUs, but did not give any detail with respect to those letters in support. The 26 letters you mentioned pale in comparison to the over 100 supporters and the over 100 letters of support for ADUs. That goes to your bias, and it clearly shows another agenda. I hope that Art Gordon, from Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley's office, who is listening to this call, as well as Chris Westfall, take notice of this. Systems of racism, particularly when it deals with housing discrimination, must be addressed. And any town or elected official that engages in such activity should be called on the spot. The, the representations of Meredith Hall, and while she has great supporters who acknowledge, "I was on the call when you guys took the vote," and she made no mention of any of those items. And so I think that you guys are doing something that is systemically based in race.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt because, as I had mentioned at the, earlier on, Robert's Rules of Order, it's, it's out of order to arraign the motives of another. It's, it's okay to, for us to debate the, the merits of the article. We have competing values. All of the values are important, but, but we need to be careful to not...
Values that violate the law are not important. And if you're gonna mischaracterize information as it's come in, you're mischaracterizing information. For example, it is your board that continues to disseminate information that is wrong. Thousands of multifamily properties? Where are those plans that have been submitted to the Town of Milton to construct? 540B units? Where? The Town of Milton currently complies at 4.9% with Chapter 40B. And of those units, almost all of them are senior housing. And I understand that you like, as has been the history of the Town of Milton. You like supporting senior housing. We all do. However, to deny access to young professionals, the right and the ability to have housing that is classified as affordable, and the ability to purchase in communities in which they either were raised, lived, or currently serve, and trying to then force seniors or people with houses to only rent to their family members, you're sort of rolling the dice. And so when you raise these issues in town meeting, you can't then say that there's mischaracterization of information. You're the ones who are keep bringing up 40B and the, in the volume of units coming into Milton. Milton has no volume. It's nothing more than fear mongering. And so I would say that those statements have to be rejected. And it is the Planning Board's duty to, to disseminate accurate information. And so if you're not gonna disseminate the information accurately, then there has to be another governing body, whether it's the federal government or the state government, who can come in and regulate actions and activity that borders on discrimination.
I thank you for your comments tonight. Thank you for joining us. All right. Our next person in line is Mr. Mike Kelly. Good evening. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Can I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Mike Kelly, 132 Whittier Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9, and former Planning Board Member. I just, I, to, to cut to the chase, I've got some scattered comments on a piece of paper here, so I'm gonna have a little time getting around it. But to cut to the chase, I think the special permit could be tweaked to accomplish everything that people want here without relinquishing some control that the town has to make sure that it's just not free-for-all. And, you know, with the, with the limit of the numbers, that, that, that is a quirky thing. If, if it goes to by right and it's limited by numbers, then certain people are gonna get knocked out that, you know, can't afford it. But anyway. I heard one person from the Planning Board say, "On occasion, you could rent to someone you don't know." Unless I'm mistaken, I assume the way that the "at right" is written, you can rent to someone you don't know anytime and directly if you, that, that's what you care to do. Which in that case, again, it gives no notice to a butters, which gets me to another tangent and the thought, and that is, I buy a house in a, in a, in a single-family zone. It's designated residential, single-family, and I buy it. Maybe I don't know the guy that lives on my right and the guy that lives on my left has a two-family, because he has a, you know, and I, and I, that slipped, actually. He has a two-bedroom apartment in his house, and, and so does the guy on the left. Should the real estate agent have some obligation to tell this person that this is residential, single-family zoning? But there are people in the neighborhood that have apartments in their house. You might strangely want to call it a two-family, but we're gonna give it a special designation. We'll call it ADU. As far as affordability and diversity, I mean, like, multiple people have commented, Milton is very desirable. And for whatever reason you decide to do this, if somebody says, "I'll give you $1,500," or the next guy says, "I'll give you $2,000," anybody's gonna take the more. So I don't, I don't know that it's gonna make it that affordable, and in that case diverse. And I actually went and got a special permit and had an in-law apartment built for my mother, who is, you know, since passed away. But, you know, my father passed away at a certain time of year. Maybe, maybe the next person's father passed away at an opportune time of year, and all the permits will already be given out. And, and people that are doing it by right to make money, simply, will, will nix her out of position. But, you know, I, I'd also like to say that people that are so hard on how Milton people want to keep in Milton, I'm not from Milton. And when I was in high school, my mother wanted to buy a house in Milton. And my mother was in tears. She couldn't afford a house in Milton. She found one, but she just couldn't afford it. Her and my father. She was the person, I say my mother wanted to buy it, but sometimes, you know, people can't afford it. And it doesn't matter who they are or where they come from, they just couldn't afford it. So that's the, you know, long and the short of it. But I think, again, cutting back to the chase here, with the special permit, it allows the, the town, the neighbors, the community to have some input. And I don't think there's no negativeness in having the community have input in what's going on in the community. So if, if you wanna, you know, you might say, "Well, last person, only to people that have family members." Well, maybe you could tweak the special permit to allow people that are family members, for good reason. I mean, we're good people. We're a good community. If my neighbor's, is, is falling on bad times and he has to make a couple bucks, maybe me and the guy that lives on the other side, the guy that lives behind, the guy that lives in front, will say, "He's been a good guy there for the last 20 years." Why do we want to see him lose his house and stuff? Apparently, people, like, everybody has bad motives here. I don't think anybody has bad motives. But this, as a right, isn't fair. It's like not wearing a mask. It's not fair to the rest of the people. I just bought a house in a residential zone, a single-family, and you're telling me, "Wait a minute, you didn't tell me when I moved in that everybody in this neighborhood already has an apartment in their house." It ain't single-family. So I, I just think, I, I don't know why it has to be by right. I went in and did it, and I didn't find it very difficult at all. Matter of fact, the person that was on the zoning board, I bumped into him the other night, and this is many years ago this happened, he said, "I, I, I encourage you, and I wish more people would come and take care of their elderly like that." And I didn't have any hard time doing it at all. So I, I, I think that if, if something needs to change, I think you tweak the special permit. You don't come in, this is by right. It's just, I, I, and I'm, I'm, I just don't understand. I, I think some people want to look at me as not being very intelligent because I say, "I just can't see the difference between calling it an ADU or a two-family." And you're saying, "Well, it's only, it's only a two-bedroom." Well, I know a lot of people grew up in two families, where there were only two bedrooms and they had six kids. That's all I got to say.
Well, thank you so much. Nice to see you, Mike. Good evening. All right. Let's see. Next, we have Alex Whiteside. Mr. Whiteside?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alexander Whiteside. I'm a Town Meeting, I live at 79 Hillside Street. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9. I was on the Planning Board for 32 years. I was the Chief Counsel at the Department of Community, of, of the Housing and Community Development, for 16 years. And I've written a lot of zoning in the 32 years that I was on the Planning Board. In fact, I wrote most of the zoning that the town had. And I have specific problems with the current article. And zoning has to be written properly. It has to be very tightly written. There has to be no ambiguities, no... It's gotta be clear. This simply isn't clear. And whatever one's position may be on ADUs, and my position is ADUs are, as defined, are fine. We've got an ADU by law because temporary apartments qualify as ADUs under the definition. There's nothing wrong with ADUs, but if you want to write zoning about ADUs, you've got to write it right. And if you write it wrong, just saying, "Well, ADUs are great," who cares if the zoning is wrong? That is a terrible mistake to make. And I have prepared a memorandum, an 11-page memorandum, pointing out some of the problems that the language in what is currently proposed calls. And I have made the argument that an ADU is an exception to our zoning. Our zoning is single-family zoning. An ADU creates a two-family house. It creates an exception to the zoning. And it's an exception to single-family. And the word "family" is important because when people say that if you do something accessory to a single family, it's somehow discriminatory, that not, it, it, it isn't necessarily. It's accessory to a family. And that's what the zoning has to do with, single-family zoning. You can do two-family zoning, but we don't. We've got single-family zoning. And the ADU is an exception to it. I have gone on in some detail about how doing it by right, which means that you don't tell your neighbors, you don't go to the Board of Appeals, you simply file for a building permit with the building inspector, and you get a building permit. You build it, you get a certificate of occupancy, and you're on your way. And that's not the way to do it. This is an exception. And you've got to let your neighbors know what you're doing as an exception to the zoning. I point out that in this zoning, there's an elaborate procedure for an application for a special permit ADU. And there's no provision for an application for a by-right ADU. None. All you do is ask, is apply for a building permit, and there is no specification of what has to be in that building permit. The building commissioner has said he wants prescription. He wants to be told what to do. This tells him nothing, nothing. It's not the way it should be. You have to specify what has to be, what's going to be in the application, just like it is for a special permit ADU. There are no administrative procedures for the building commissioner to follow. He wanted prescription. Once again, he gets nothing. There is a section in this proposed bylaw called Necessary Use and Dimensional Requirements. Use and Dimensional Requirements. These requirements apply only to special permit ADUs. There are no Use and Dimensional Requirements specified for by-right ADUs. Why is this? What's the difference between them? There are plenty of differences the way it's written, but when they're built, they're going to be similar. There are no termination provisions for by-right ADUs. There are termination provisions with respect to special permit ADUs. In fact, the proposed zoning goes on at some length about how you would terminate a special permit ADU in the event that there was a violation of the zoning or of the special permit. But with respect to by-right ADUs, there's, once again, nothing. Parking. For special permit ADUs, parking has to be adequate. For by-right ADUs, no provision, no provision that parking has to be adequate. The only provision is in the zoning, and that provision is in a residency district, which has most of the homes in Milton. You need one space for the ADU and one space for the principal dwelling unit. A total of two spaces. And if you produce two spaces, you're good to go as far as a by-right ADU is concerned. For the other districts, it's two spaces for the ADU and two spaces for the principal dwelling unit. Once again, you provide these four spaces, you're good to go. No, no requirement that the parking has to be adequate, and this is the zone.
I thank you.
I will stop now, and I will press the raise hand button again because I have some further comments.
Okay. We'll give you a second turn after, after the other people have had, had an opportunity to speak. Thank you. And if Mr. Kelly could put his hand down, unless he wants to speak a second time. But I'll go to the next person in line. Thank you, Mike. Okay.
Before I, we've got Ashali Singham next. I just wanted to kind of add some, some commentary, or some commentary is the wrong word. The Building Commissioner did review the, sort of, the, the base draft that, that led to the, the language that we're talking about tonight. He offered a, a number of comments that were then incorporated. But, you know, by and large, the, the by-right provisions that are in the language right now have bustered with him. So, you know, it's the, the, the sort of, the caveat to that is, you know, maybe a building commissioner down the line may not have the same opinions, but, you know, that person will inherit the zoning that, that they inherit. And so, you know, we, we did, we did explicitly reach out to the Building Commissioner to get his input on the sort of enforceability and administrative components of this bylaw. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. And Ms. Singham, Ms. Singham? Or it might be, oh, good evening. Thank you. If you could give us your street address. I've been forgetting to ask for people's street address, but it's good for...
I live on 62 Essex Road.
Oh, thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening. So I, I've heard a lot of people here who seem to support ADUs as a general concept or for caregivers and family. I am strongly in support of this provision as written, and I really do hope it goes... I am strongly in support of this provision as written, and I really do hope it goes to town meeting without any more procedural steps. And I'm going to focus on the two things that seem to be most concerning to people, which are at-right, the by-right provision, and the fact that this can be rented. So I want to talk about the by-right provision first. I personally really do not see why the town and the neighbors should decide which people are potentially more deserving or which ones they like more. If they are within the guidelines, I think the town should be neutral. I do not think that neighbors should get to have a say in that. As I think Tim said, that that is an exclusionary, definitely it's an exclusionary thing to say, oh, if you have a parent or a caregiver, it's there. And then to also say like, oh, like the neighbors get to decide if this is a good use of your own home. It's definitely exclusionary. The opportunities for bias are, are evident there if you're setting up that structure. I very much like the by-right. These are the provisions you have to meet. And then anyone can go. And in my personal preference, we wouldn't have the ten-unit cap. But that's, you know, that's how it's written, and I, I do want this to go forward as written. And then I, I've heard a lot of concern about rental units and provision of rental units. So I just wanted to state that I am definitely in favor of more rental units. I, you know, I'm hearing people talk about affordability and how this doesn't meet our affordability requirements. This seems to be like the technical state definition of the town's responsibility to provide affordability that is being referenced here. When I am talking about affordability, I'm talking about people's abilities to get homes. And this clearly, to me, does take a step in that direction. While there are no limitations on the rent that can be charged, these units will be smaller. They will be rental. That definitely makes them, on the face, much more affordable. I mean, anyone who's looked at Redfin knows what it costs to get any kind of home in Milton now. It's outrageously high. And so if we have more apartments where people can rent it, it's definitely making us more affordable in the way that truly matters, which is people being able to afford a home. And I do think a lot of, like, the concerns about developers coming in and building this, there seem to be very explicitly not allowed in the way it's drafted. The owner must live in the home. I think both Kathleen and Cheryl mentioned that, or, or one of you did. The owner has to be in the home. The owner has to occupy the home. If that homeowner happens to make money, great, like, I think that's fine. That's not a developer coming in and changing the town of Milton. That's a new person. That's a homeowner who's getting income. And it's an opportunity for someone else to rent in Milton, for someone else to have a home in its town, which we just don't have those opportunities now. The other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is I'm hearing a lot about Milton is a single-family zone place. This is how it is. This is how people want it to be. I live in a neighborhood where we have a lot of multifamily. We have a lot of two-family houses. We have a lot of single-family houses. That is my vision for the, that is, like, I like living in that neighborhood. I don't see this great concern with that happening. I think there are many other people who also like that and are fine with, like, a denser thing. And particularly if homeowners are making that choice. So while I don't think that by any stretch, this ADU provision will lead to, you know, an explosion of two-family houses, in part because there is a ten-unit cap, and in part because I think, as people have said, you know, there aren't huge numbers of applications that come in in the towns that have similar provisions. I do want to kind of caution against what is feeling like this kind of narrative that Milton is single-family zoning and we need to protect that, and that is the character of Milton. That's not the character of Milton that I see. And I think there are a lot of people who would agree with me. So I just think we shouldn't characterize, you know, Milton wants this, this is Milton's character. I think there's a lot of diversity of views on that, and I think that this should go to town meeting. And I really hope it does, and I hope it gets passed. And it's a step in the direction of giving people more opportunities to have housing. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you for participating. Have a good night. Thank you. Mr. Robert Sweeney. And before Bob Sweeney talks, I just wanted to say, Bob is from the Milton Neighborhood Coalition. I have been a member in the past of the Milton Neighborhood Coalition. The Neighborhood Coalition is a, an association of neighborhood leaders, kind of like a neighborhood association, but it's an association of neighborhood leaders. So thank you. Good evening, Mr. Sweeney.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Bob Sweeney. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Nine, a former member of the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. And I just wish to go on record as, and let the public know that last evening I sent to the three chairs, Chair Asher, Chair Conlon, and Chair Swenson, a letter on behalf of the Neighborhood Coalition that included a petition from over a hundred and sixty-five citizens. And the petition very simply reads that we believe the accessory dwelling unit article should be sent back for further study. And the good news is that we've got a better option. We would like to support the Citizens Amendment to improve the temporary apartment bylaw. And as I said, over a hundred and sixty-five people have added their names. This petition's been going on now for approximately three weeks, and it has skyrocketed in, in support. And that, the folks that have signed are neighborhood leaders. There's approximately, well, there's more than twenty town meeting members. And the citizens that have signed represent all ten districts in Milton. So I just want to disclose that. I want to say kudos to the civic-minded folks that cared enough to sign that petition. I think your participation is real, really awesome. And I, I wish to, to, to thank you for that. And I also want to say that the folks that have signed their position and the evidence for that position was unanimously supported on January the eighteenth. A warrant committee meeting deliberated, I'm going to say for at least an hour on the ADU subject. And their unanimous vote was to recommend that it be sent back for further study, because there's too many outstanding issues. And I'll leave it as that, although I do have a number of personal reasons that I indicated at the warrant committee as to why I'm in favor of the temporary apartment bylaw. And I'll just, I don't want to take up too much time, but I'm going to give just two, two points of from where I'm coming from. And point number one is that one of the beauties of this town is its lack of density. There's so many, many people that moved here because they wanted a little bit more emptiness. They wanted to get away from the crowdedness. And a lot of people historically from Milton, they're like, such as my parents, they lived in Dorchester, they worked hard, they saved up their money, and they wanted to, to move to Milton, because it's a desirous community. And it's got a great school system, great, great citizens. And the people that have signed that petition rightfully want to, want to protect their, their town. And I'm hoping that that's all the same for those that are advocating for the ADUs as well. We just have a disagreement. And hopefully, the amendments to the temporary apartment bylaw could bring us together. I do say to anybody that advocates for the ADU that, to me, you cannot have a good bylaw that lacks democracy. And the reason I'm saying lacks democracy is because if you shut out neighbors, that's not democratic. And the ADU says that a neighbor doesn't have the right to give input. And I think that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Sweeney. Could you give us your street address for the clerk?
I live at one fifty-six Woodya Road in Milton.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening. Yes.
Denny, sorry, just real quick, couldn't we put on, because I'm afraid, I want to make sure, there's a lot of hands. I want to make sure we reach everybody. Could we put like a, like a time folks have?
Yes, yes. It, it's, I've been giving people three to five minutes. I'll shorten it to three to four. People seem to have a lot to say.
No, I understand. I think personally, three would be better. I mean, I mean, I want to hear from everybody, but I also want to make sure we hear new things.
Okay, all right. I, I thought I saw Kathleen in the group. Did we lose Kathleen O'Donnell? I didn't know if we needed to let her back in. Well, I'll leave that to, all right. So thank you, Bob Sweeney. Next, we have Amy in line. Amy? Amy, if you could give us your name and street address. Good evening. Hi, Amy. Are you able to unmute? Are we able to unmute her?
Sorry, two things. I don't Zoom well, and I had to borrow my daughter's computer, who said I could not get her name out of the Zoom meeting. However, I assure you, she grew up in this house, the very house I'm sitting in right now. And my name is Judy Steele. Okay, and her name really still is Amy, and she's all grown up now.
Oh, great. Do we get your address before I forget?
Yes, on Columbia Park. She still gets mail here, if you want to verify that.
Oh, I can.
Okay. I want to speak to the cap issue. In my perusing of other towns that have this right ADUs incorporated into their bylaws now, it's very noticeable that the majority of towns similar to ours do have a cap. And I was listening to Tim, and he sort of gave, gave a good overview of the pros and cons of a cap. And that many of these towns, in fact, who do have caps, don't even get the full amount of applications to the cap in a year basis. I do feel the caps are important. Go in slow. See how it works. In ten years from now, if the caps really were detriment to the purpose and intent of this ADU, well, change can always happen. But I would hate to see, I would hate to see full steam ahead without caps. I think they're there for a person, purpose. They have worked in other towns. Slow growth is, is good. It's okay. It's, you'll catch up year by year by year. There's additional growth and more growth and more growth. It doesn't have to have, have, happen in explosive growth. So that's my, my opinion on the cap, that it has proven to work, it has proven not to be a detriment in other towns. And we should perhaps look at those examples when we consider the merits of keeping the cap if this ADU is passed. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Next in line, we have Christopher Benson. Good evening, Christopher.
Sorry, it's actually Elaine Benson.
Oh, good evening, Elaine.
Okay, so Elaine Benson, sixty-seven Granite Place. I'm a town meeting member, Precinct Seven. I serve on the Personnel Board, and I am in the Master Plan Implementation Committee. As previously mentioned, I shared a letter in support of sending the article to town meeting, signed by over one hundred and fifteen community members, many of whom serve our town in various capacities and thirty that are current town meeting members. First, I could not agree more with previous speakers, Linda Champion and Ashali Singham. I have lived in Milton for close to five years with my family of four, and we rent in a two-family. If it were not for this two-family home, that, by the way, you cannot tell is a two-family from the exterior, we may not have been able to afford to move into this community. And it's a community that we love and that we're vested in and, you know, plan to purchase in someday. I'm really discouraged by the tone that two-family home, that people who rent, that diversity in housing is somehow bad. It's been rampant on social media here in Milton. You know, for example, members in our community have said things like, quote, "If you can't afford to live in Milton, there are three hundred other towns to live in," end quote. Quote, "There are plenty of housing projects in Mattapan and Roxbury," end quote. End quote, "The last thing the town needs is more six-family inner-city style living," end quote. Zoning decisions have a direct link to racial segregation and income inequality. The median home price sixty years ago would cost less than one hundred thousand dollars today. Yet the average house in Milton costs over five hundred thousand. You know, it's, I think everybody knows supply does not meet demand, and this is a national problem. And Milton has failed to come up with solutions to address the housing crisis. You know, ADUs have been adopted by many communities, as been previously mentioned, in the Commonwealth. And there are countless articles on the positive impact that they have on increasing affordable housing with minimal impact to the character of the town. I feel it's time for this article to go to town meeting as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Did we get your street address? I'm trying to help the clerk.
Sure. Sixty-seven Granite Place.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. Kathleen O'Donnell has her hand up. I think she got kicked out. I, I mean, I think she's. Can we, can we add Kathleen to the panelists? And, and April Anderson. Hello. Nice to see you. Good evening.
Thanks, Meredith.
Hi, everybody. April Anderson, three twenty-five Elliot Street. Town meeting member, Precinct Two, former member of this board. I also am the former Assistant Secretary for the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I currently run an economic development consulting firm where I work with cities and towns across the state and in other states on zoning. So I just had a couple of comments about this. The first, I just want to reiterate what this, what a speaker before me said. There is no such thing as a single-family zoned community. I mean, zoning is what the community wants it to be, and there's no one shape for any of this. So I, I do feel like the conversation is getting a little overly complicated. And the community can change the zoning whenever they want to change the zoning. And it should be reflective of our values and our priorities for our, the people that live here and what we want to project to people who don't yet live here. The idea that we have seniors and disabled people that have been on this waitlist for affordable units for so many years, and they so very rarely come up. Families waiting for affordable units that so very rarely become available, maybe one a year. And the fact that our housing production plan has for twenty years suggested that we revisit the ADU statute as a potential source of affordable units is one big, big reason why this should move forward. But I, you know, we had this debate last year. And at the same time, we had a number of people saying, wait a minute, we're not ready. We need to send this back for further study. We've done it, gone around and around in circles on this for so many years. I think that this just needs to go to town meeting. There's things about this particular bylaw that I would change. In fact, I would be not in support of the cap, and I think this should be as a right across the board within the footprint of a home. But you've done this hard work, and I applaud you for doing it, and you've come up with your draft bylaw. And what I would implore you to do is please put it before town meeting. There's such a small fraction of people that participate in these discussions before the board that I, I just don't feel like you're getting a really good snapshot. And I don't think we did last year, when I was there either, of what the general consensus is across the community. I think there's a lot of people in favor of accessory dwelling units for a number of reasons. And I would just really like town meeting to have the opportunity to take that vote. I understand there's a lot of strong opinions. The idea, you know, that this is going to change the landscape of our community, I just think is fundamentally incorrect. I do think we're a densely developed community in comparison to most of the communities in the Commonwealth. I think that this is actually a very much, even if it was wide open with no cap, a very much slow-growth strategy. In two thousand and seven, I led the development of a best practices guide for local permitting that has been widely adopted across the Commonwealth in Milton. We only just started adopting some of these policies in the last few years. I think that's why we've been underperforming in our land use policy development. And I think that's what led to the influx of forty-b projects that so many people are upset about today. So, you know, this is not a one-off solution, but it is something that has been recommended for twenty years. And I think that town meeting deserves an opportunity to vote on it. So for that reason, I ask you to please put yes and put it forward to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Good evening. Mr. Della, Della Rare. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Della Rovere. I live at one.
Good evening. Um, my name is Jeff Della Rovere. Uh, I live at 142 Pleasant Street. And I've really drawn a lot from, um, the previous speaker and some of the other previous speakers who have really helped to highlight, um, the idea that this is a, a incremental but important step forward in creating equitable access, um, to Milton for anyone who wants to join our town. In addition to meeting the stated goals of, of the, uh, of the bylaw, which would allow for, um, anyone to create, uh, an opportunity for, uh, support of, uh, people who want to come into our town, as well as existing families, um, that hopefully, um, can support, extended family members. So, uh, I feel like, uh, much is, what, much of what's been said reflects, uh, what I was hoping to myself convey, um, and more. But, uh, with that said, um, I think some of the points that we get at that, um, is that the, the, the current cap of 10, um, seems to be incredibly limiting to any of those stated goals that I just reviewed. Uh, I believe that, um, uh, the idea of incremental change of 10 a year, uh, over even the next decade would really be 100 units. And when we're talking about trying to serve so many different demographics between creating access for people to come into Milton, in addition to servicing, uh, senior citizens, uh, and young people trying to return to town, I, I appreciate Tim saying, you know, at least alleviating some of my concern by saying that that's not what other towns have found, but, uh, given our proximity to Boston, I feel like we might need to be more aggressive than that. And, uh, in addition, uh, this idea of, of trying to limit, um, homeowners by creating a burdensome, um, appeals, uh, process to go for the zoning board of appeals for any changes, uh, to the home, um, including ones that are not within the existing structure, but, um, are still attached to the home. Um, I feel like there are ways for neighbors to work together, uh, on these issues, uh, without having to, um, create that extra burden, uh, and slow down this process. With that being said, uh, I really do, uh, defer to some of the previous speakers and really helping to educate me in terms of, uh, thinking about, uh, moving this forward, and that not trying to get to perfect, uh, but, um, trying to move forward with, um, creating more equitable access to our town. So, in that regard, I think I've changed my mind a little bit, and we'd like to see this go forward to town meeting at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Did we get your street address?
Yes, again, it's 142 Pleasant Street.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good evening. Robert Rosowski. Hello, Mr. Rosowski. Good evening.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, planning board members and the general public listening in. I'm Robert Rosowski. I live at 29 Waldo Road, off of Elliot Street, right next to Shields Park. I've lived there for over 30 years. When there was a previous planning board hearing on this, uh, ADU issue, I think it was about a month ago, in early January, I testified in favor. I haven't changed my mind. I'm still in favor. I've submitted written comments since. And so they're a matter of public record. Everyone can look at them. I'm generally in favor of the article. I'm very much opposed to the 10-unit cap. And, you know, what, what is really perplexing to me is we're talking about 10 units, if this goes all the way through, 10 units. And I feel people who are opposed to this, look at these 10 units as a crack in the dam through which we're going to have a flood and end up with 100-unit apartment houses on every single corner of Milton. That is not going to happen. That is exaggeration and hyperbole. So I want to speak to a little bit more about that. I've heard some other claims. I've heard that there's no notice to neighbors. There is a notice to neighbors if you're putting an extension on your house or you're building a separate unit. That's in the article. There are claims that these should be built specifically for family members and caregivers. Well, since when do we regulate to whom we could rent? Our country has a sad history of enforcing racial segregation by refusing to enable people of color to either build or rent in certain communities. And if you think I'm engaging in hyperbole, you can read Richard Rothstein's "The Color of Law", which documents this very clearly, how that's happened throughout at least the 20th century. There are claims that we're going to have horrible parking situations. The article is clear where parking needs to be enabled. There are concerns about roadway traffic. This is a concern that is decades old, given that we have single occupancy vehicle as our main form of transportation. That's where we need to deal with this, not in terms of parking or traffic requirements related to ADUs. There's concern about, oh, this is going to affect the schools, like there are going to be so many children. Well, think about this for a moment. If the homeowner stays in their main larger house and they rent to a family in an ADU, how many children, if any, can they bring in? One, two, would they bring in maybe just some babies as a starter home until they look elsewhere? So let's reverse the situation. The single owner or the couple that are most likely older, they move into the AD unit, and they rent out their house to a family with children who go to the school. Well, that's not going to be any more children who would go to school than if they sold their house to the same family in the first place. So I'm just, you know, really tired of hearing this constant hyperbole, exaggeration, and fear mongering about what a low, if it goes through, just 10 units, 10 ADUs per year is going to put into Milton. Then just one other little side note, and I'll finish. Mr. Sweeney raised the number of people who signed a petition. While we're talking about a war of petitions, 119 people signed a petition in favor. So we can have petition wars if you'd like, but I think the discussion should really be on the substance. We have a housing crisis in the nation, in the state, and in this town. ADUs are just a small increment for helping to fix that, and I hope it's the beginning of a larger increment to fix these housing problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening. Lisa Ward. Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Ward. I work in Milton. I, however, I do not live in Milton. Am I able to still speak?
I'm sure.
Um, my, um, address is 8 Blue Jay Circle, Matapan.
Okay.
Part of the reason I live in Matapan is because when I came here, I couldn't afford nothing. Though I work full-time in Milton. So when I'm hearing, um, the discussions about as-of-right versus special-use permits, um, which I think is the crux of the matter in, in many ways, what I hear is that it's about control and fear of change. I don't think it's about the structure of the house or the cost of the apartment or developers swooping in. I think it's about demographics. It's about demographics. Who can live in Milton? I don't understand, actually, how it is promoted that neighbors and officials could have power over a person who, a power over who an owner rents to in their home. That, um, that doesn't make sense to me. And I hear the phrase "competing values", and I would really think it's important that we unpack that phrase, "competing values." I don't know, Denny Swanson, if you would be willing to unpack that at some point. What exactly does that mean? Because what I see are values of control. We're talking 10 units a year. Incremental, essential change in efforts toward diversity, equity, and inclusion. I, you know, I, I feel that sending the article as written is a good thing. However, I'm not a zoning expert. If there needs to be some tweaking, I would, you know, say that please do it in a timeframe that gets the article to town meeting. We really need to move on this. Need to move on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Thank you for joining us tonight. Good evening, Frank Schraub. Good evening, Frank.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm okay.
Nice to see you.
Thanks, Madam Chair, uh, for the time, and I, uh, my comments were slightly trumped by Ms. Anderson. However, I waited this long, so by golly, I'm going to speak. I start with the, with the Warren Committee of, uh, January, I think it was January 18th. A couple of, of things that I did notice. I was surprised Ms. O'Donnell wasn't there as the author of the article, and I thought it was kind of, I would have, I thought it would have benefited the Warren Committee to have heard directly from her, because, um, what I heard was they were reacting a lot to the email analysis you had done, which was correct, except I would just qualify it slightly by saying, my sense was that somebody had put up a lot of those people to write in, and that they may have even given them talking points, because there was, if you go through the emails, there was languages that's identical that cut through all of them. So, it's, it's kind of, I'm making a fine point here, but the point is that it wasn't as if independently 25 people wrote in these notes. There was someone who had, you know, basically promoted that effort, and it, it's, I think that's worth noting. And I think if Ms. O'Donnell had been there, there would have been a little bit more balance to, uh, what the Warren Committee heard, because it's true that unanimously want to refer it back, but I think the basis for that decision was based on not exactly a comprehensive and clear information. It, I, I just had, I had trouble with that. Second point, I, I share the comment that's been made by others that, uh, there's a notion of fear that gets promoted, and I just don't share that fear. And, and so, for example, that ADUs is going to open up the town to this wide number of people who are gonna, you know, we're going to be have two families everywhere. That's not going to be the case. I, I have not researched this thoroughly, but in the research I did do, two things I learned. One is that special permit, permits, basically make ADUs almost useless because of the cost to do them. Second point is even, even as-of-right, even towns that have as-of-right ADUs have had trouble getting, uh, owners, uh, to, to develop these ADUs because of costs, and there were in fact towns here, like on the Cape, where they are trying to financially incentivize people to do it because the affordable housing is such an issue for them. I also live off of Elliot Street. Elliot Street is, 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 I wouldn't call it dense, but it's denser than a lot of other parts of town. And as a, a woman that spoke earlier, I believe Ashali Singham had said, uh, there are people that may agree with me. I'm one of them. Uh, we have two-family homes on, on the street I live on, on Avalon Road. There's other two-family homes around the corner from me on Elliot Street. And actually, there's a certain, uh, sense of community that comes out of that level of density. And again, I, I too appreciate the green space in Milton, but I think that, uh, that having places where these types of developments are appropriate is perfectly reasonable. And, uh, I think, I think that's it. I just, the, um, only other thing, and, and again, I, I have complete, Alex Whiteside has done tremendous things for this town. However, I do believe that Ms. O'Donnell has written a good article, and I do believe that the necessary protections are in it. And I just don't, I just don't agree that we have to be worried about anything here. And then lastly, that it go before town meeting, to, to Mr. Sweeney's comment about democracy, you folks were elected, and the majority of you, I believe, have, have voted on this. Town meeting members are elected, and they represent their precincts. So, there's a, the, the, I think that, that vehicle for voicing our democracy is there and should be taken advantage of, and I would really encourage you to move this forward to the special town meeting. And then the, the one last thing, I'm sorry, I keep saying the last thing, I'm like Columbo or something. There was a comment made about, uh, I, I called the, uh, um, the town clerk with regard to this notion of that she would have a list of neighborhood associations. Just FYI, she does not. She said, "No, and we don't have anything to do with them," quote-unquote. So, I don't know where, you know, because at the Warren Committee, some, uh, members of the Warren Committee had wondered, gee, maybe I'm in one, or maybe there's one available to me. I don't know where or how those get controlled. And maybe as someone who had started the coalition, you might be able to help with that, but, um, I, and that, so that's, again, that's it. Thanks for your time. Thanks for what you do, and, uh, have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Schraub. I mean, in answer to your question, very quickly, every neighborhood can form its own neighborhood association, and they can be as formal or as informal as they want. I was the president of the Friends of Him and We Woods Neighborhood Association. We, we did, um, you know, the non, the non, uh, the nonprofit tax status and all of that for a while, and then we weren't very active anymore, and that sort of dwindled. So, neighborhoods activate however they activate. There are some neighborhoods, like the Hillside Neighborhood Association, that's very formal. Um, the East Milton Neighborhood Association is very formal. They have a board and all this stuff. So, every neighborhood does their own thing. Um, so.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, good evening. All right, I see that we have, um, let's see, Alex Whiteside has his hand up. So, um, and I'm wondering if anyone else would like to speak before we let Alex speak for the second time?
I thought Rich had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, it's okay. I put my hand down. I was just going to say, I, I think what's left, it seems like, is folks that want to speak the second time. I was going to, uh, suggest that maybe we move to, um, deliberate, close and deliberate after, after the folks get to speak for the second or whoever.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I see, um, okay, um, Frank, I think, are you done? If you could, um, lower your hand if you're done, and we'll let Hale Smith, um, Mr. Smith speak, and then Alex and Mike Kelly would be a second time. So, good evening, Hale. Good evening, Hale. Mr. Smith. Hi, Hale. If you can unmute, I don't know if we can unmute him.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right, nice to see you.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I live at 1632 Canton Avenue, have been a longtime resident of Milton, and I've spoken several times on this subject of the ADUs. Um, the ADU proposal will certainly help meet the legitimate needs of, of some Milton residents, which I favor. So, um, upfront, I want to be very clear that I do think there are many benefits from, from, uh, liberalizing our current, uh, ADU provisions. However, the right, the buy-right provision creates a powerful economic incentive for house flippers to purchase houses on the market at a premium in order to convert them to income properties. Such buyers are not motivated by, are motivated by profits, not a desire to live in Milton. They should not control the rate of change in Milton neighborhoods. So while, you know, I don't necessarily think that, uh, putting a limit on the number of ADU units that may be built in the town is the best approach, I don't believe that uncontrolled as-of-right, um, language is appropriate for Milton. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. And, um, did we get your street address?
Yes, you did. It's 1632 Canton Avenue.
Oh, great. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Whiteside. Good evening again.
Hello again.
So we left off with parking, I think.
Do you hear me? I was, yeah, I was, I was discussing, this has been a very interesting discussion, and, uh, no one but me seems to be focused on deficiencies in the actual language of the bylaw, and there are actual deficiencies. And I have written an 11-page memorandum, and it doesn't, you know, I get the feeling like no one has read it. Because, uh, I've been, when, okay, I, I, I see one member of the board, three members of the board. This is great. In any event, um, and four members of the board, and I bet there are five. In, in any event, there are problems in the language, and I go into that in detail. I think that parking I think that parking needs to be much clearer. As I say, there are no provisions with respect to an as of right, as of right ADU. And there should be, parking should be adequate. And there should be provisions. And there should be an application. And maybe the building inspector has looked at this, but simply to say he's looked at it and he doesn't make any comments, I don't think is an adequate analysis of what I'm raising. There should be a plan. There should be a site plan, just like there is for special permit ADU, showing where the parking is, showing the screening. I mean, it, this shouldn't be controversial, but no one, no one seems to care. But they will care, they will care in the, in the end, if this were to go through and there would be no control over parking and no parking plan. Not good. I make a point about major alterations. A by right ADU can't have any major alterations to the exterior. And there is no definition of what a major alteration is. It's just what the building inspector thinks is a major alteration. And once again, I don't, I don't know what he thinks about this, but I think that there should be some standards to guide him as to what a major alteration is. Owner occupancy, there are three different requirements for owner occupancy. There's a definition of owner, which includes all owners. And it, as a result of that definition, these three separate provisions are in conflict. And they're going to cause all kinds of problems unless they're fixed. They're easy enough to fix it. But if you just don't care, they won't be fixed. The use and dimensional requirements, I make, you know, I have a page and a half of specific suggestions for change, specific suggestions. For instance, it says the use of an ADU has to be subordinate to the use of the principal dwelling quarters. But if one person lives in the principal dwelling quarters and two people live in the ADU, it's clearly not subordinate. This language doesn't, it needs fixing. And it needs fixing in a lot of places. And I've written 11 pages. And no one but me has mentioned, well, actually, the parking has been mentioned. And the parking is a huge issue. Because if you don't have adequate parking, you might as well start on allowing street parking in Milton. Maybe that's a good idea, but maybe it isn't. But I, you know, I make seven specific suggestions with respect to the use and dimensional requirements and say that they should be applied to as of right ADUs as well as special permit ADUs. And I think they should be. And I think that most people would agree that there should, they should be. So I'm a little discouraged that more people haven't looked at the actual language of what is being presented and recognize that there are a lot of areas in which it needs to be fixed. And if you pass it the way it is now, it is going to be a huge mistake. And Milton is going to regret it for a long, long time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteside. Thank you. Thank you for submitting all of your documents to this whole process. I've learned a great deal. Okay, all right, we have Mike, oh, wait a minute, we have Mr. Rob Levasch and then Mike would be for a second time. So good evening, Mr. Levasch.
Hey, I'm Rob Levasch, town meeting member, precinct 10, vice chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'll be quick. Obviously, my name was on the petition for support for this article. I absolutely supported. I've spoken to many people in town. And for me, what it really comes down to for the as of right, it does come down to the opportunity for discrimination. I absolutely believe that everyone has the best intentions in this town, I really do. But there's also plenty of opportunity to discriminate against other neighbors as well. And I've witnessed it over the last two years. You know, my own neighbor or friend, for five years by another town meeting member, was, you know, harassed for his sexual orientation. You know, my one neighbor who just created a new house was, you know, being harassed by some other neighbors because of what he wanted to do on his property. There is opportunities, myself even walking down one of the, one of developments, you know, was approached by three gentlemen that said I wasn't allowed to walk there with my dog. And, you know, they just approached me. And so I really do, I want to believe that we all have the best intentions for this article. I do see both kind of points on it, but I do, I can't get, where it comes for me is the as of right for what happens inside of my walls. Why do we need to let our neighbors know what, what we're doing within our own walls? And really, that's where it comes to me, that's where the opportunity comes for discrimination. And I just can't get on board with that. So that's why I absolutely support this ADU article. And, you know, I think that's where it comes down to, those, those two issues. It's, it's that and also just being the control. And I think there's been a lot of fear mongering. And so I urge this group to put this forth, the town meeting for debate. Thank you.
Thank you, good night. Okay, Mr. Mike Kelly, did you want to speak one last time?
Yes. Very briefly, I just truly, I, because it's starting to get like I'm on the planning board again. I don't understand, even though it was a very early person, and I don't recall their names, so I'm not picking on or directing at anybody. But the last gentleman said discrimination, why should they be able to tell me what to do in my house? I bought a house where, I thought we were, I thought we were a country of laws, not individuals. Man, I bought a house, they told me it was single family zoning. Now you want to let it be a two family? And I have no right to know that. Well, don't tell me that. If other people are saying, oh, people don't like two families. My wife grew up in a two family, her family still lives there, her sister lives in another two family. Two families are fine, that's where you want to live. I guess these people, in reality, one person said zoning isn't real. It's what the town wants. Well, if the town wants as a majority to have the at town, two family or whatever, then let the town do it. And a lot of the people, it seems like the majority of the people who are in favor said they don't like the cap. Zone the town two family. Get to it. I mean, it's one, it's one or the other. Why are you sneaking two families in? If you really want two families, have two families. There's this nice town, like I said, my wife grew up in Belmont, a two family. Every, us down the streets are two family, the whole neighborhood's two families. If that's what you want, have two families. Throw out the zoning, I guess. So the people that have been talking apparently have no concept of zoning. I think that zoning is even there, or that means anything. Apparently, they think you should talk loud in the theater, play your trumpet in the library, do what you want. Just spew your germs where you want, hell with the rest of the people. I can do whatever I want. Well, there's laws and zoning that we pay attention to. It adds for all the consideration of this. I took, I took advantage of the apartment, the dwelling unit for my mother many years ago. And many years after that, I was on the planning board for five years. And I don't recall any talk about this. I know it existed, I know people went to the zoning board, people said it's discriminatory, it's very difficult. I had no difficulty in it. Is it costly? We upgraded things as my mother was in there, she moved into a bedroom first. We upgraded it. We gave her some amenities while she was there. It wasn't costly and it wasn't difficult, if you want to, really want to do it. But if you want to write that out and have an ad in the paper, make it a two family and be done with it. Stop sneaking it. Why are you being so sneaky? If you really want diversity and this and everybody's so discriminating, I'm not discriminatory. I bought a house in a single family zone and I want it to be a single family. What is so hard to understand? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly, have a good evening. Mr. Scott Johnson, good evening Scott. Good evening, Mr. Johnson, how are you tonight?
Hi, hi Denny, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, good evening.
Right, yeah, this is Scott Johnson, I'm at Two Stone Hill Lane off Hillside. I wanted to agree with the gentleman who was just speaking. This is a major change for the town. It should be carefully considered. We're talking about a lot of potential new population in a town that's wonderful as it is, but doesn't necessarily have an infrastructure that's sort of kept pace with the growth that's been. And this is sort of, would be a real bump in the rate of growth for the town. And I think there's probably a sizable environmental impact. You know, if one looks at Google Earth and sort of zeros down on the Boston area, the, you know, best wedge of green space left is here in Milton. This is just going to be more sort of congestion, there are going to be more parking problems. There's no guarantee that there's going to be any sort of the positive outcomes, I think so the other folks were hinting at. This is a major change to the town. It should be voted probably in a referendum. And I hope that this is not sort of wedged in, you know, sort of in late night meetings and whatnot. This is a major change for the identity of the town. Just like Mr. Kelly, we purchased our home wanting a single family sort of neighborhood. You know, that was the premise by which we decided to move here. And it would be quite a change, I think, to, to alter that in a way that I think the current program is suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak tonight before we close our public hearing? Thank you, okay. I will, last call, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, accessory dwelling in Bylaw.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Cheryl Skyes?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Catherine O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Thaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Denny Swentz, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so, let's see.
I could raise my hand here just because I had, I did read Alex's memo, as I've read all of them actually. But I actually had prepared comments and sort of some responses. And I would like to go through a couple of those if I may, just because members of the public who are still watching and interested might be wondering why the planning board appears not to be considering those comments. So I would like to at least go through and, and my notes, if that's okay? We don't have the screen shared, but I'll, I'll look at it on the screen here, if that's all right with you?
I'm sure that would be great.
I would just say Cheryl, that actually because of this hearing, we couldn't make those changes. Because this is just a confirmatory hearing and we were only supposed to be just dealing with the, you know, the version that we had. But I do think the public should know what our, you know, thoughts were. I read the memo, I read Cheryl's comments as well, and I think it would be helpful.
Okay, so there's, I'm not going to go through all of them, but what I would like to say is this idea that this bylaw could lead to an unrestricted open market rental apartments.
On what page are you?
I'm on page one where it says the revised article would allow second dwelling units, parentheses, quotes, accessory dwelling units, quotes, or quotes, ADUs, quotes, parentheses, to be created Milton on owner occupied lot, so for single family use. These could be unrestricted open market rental apartments. Building permits would be issued on a first come, first served basis and be limited to 10 permits per year, limited with an exception for conversion of existing temporary apartments. I just wanted to comment that this, the fear about how many will be built, well, we have the 10 limit cap. We've heard differing views on that. But there's other reasons why building these are challenging, other than the permitting process. Construction's expensive. You know, the needs of families change over time. So while someone, in fact, I took a call a couple of weeks ago from someone in Milton who said, I'd like to build a unit for my 88-year-old mother. And after that need is no longer there, my husband and I may like to live in it. But then my daughter may or may not want to live in our house. I would like to be able to rent the house out. So if we think about individual situations and what we're trying to think about, I mean, that's one example, how people's lives change over time. People have children, the children are raised, they move away, maybe they come back after they have been out of the house, but they need a temporary landing spot, as we've heard Jack Dolly talk about. And maybe people like we've heard need a place to start in an area that's grown to be so expensive. The current bylaw, while it allows for temporary apartments, also requires them to be removed when the need is no longer there. So the kitchen has to be removed and the temporary apartment has to be incorporated back into the main house. So this might be at a time when the children have already left and the family is the two parents. They don't need that extra space perhaps. But now they're looking at having more space than they need and being in a position to maybe sell the house because they want to downsize. But maybe they'd rather stay in Milton and they'd rather downsize on their own property. So we have to think about how the, it's very burdensome to build these current temporary apartments. One is required to rip them out after the investment of putting them in. I would like to then go to the next page. Actually, the, bear with me as I scroll here. Page four, under the part two, the specific deficiencies in the proposed by right procedure. There are procedures in place already when people look to construct. That's what the building permit process entails. It entails submitting an application to the building department. And that includes a requirement to submit documents. It doesn't require notice to neighbors. And it doesn't require a good design necessarily, maybe to all of our chagrin. But it doesn't necessarily require it, as long as the work meets the zoning in that particular location. So there's protections in place as there are now, as Tim already commented on. And those are the protections that apply throughout town. There's nothing about building the ADU that would remove those protections. Then I'd like to go to page, the bottom of page five talks about the no application requirements for the by right ADUs. But as I mentioned, we already have building permit requirements. And those building permits are regulated by the International Residential Code for single and two-family dwellings. And our building official is the one who is required to enforce the provisions of that code. Anyone who's looking to construct and large or to repair their building asks to obtain a permit. And that, the supporting documents for that permit must include construction drawings and construction documents. And that's defined in that code as in that code as written, graphic, and pictorial documents prepared or assembled for describing the design, location, and physical characteristics of the elements of a project necessary for obtaining a building permit. Construction documents shall be drawn to an appropriate scale. So it's already built into the requirements for what are, is going to be done. And, and the review is built into the building permit process. Our building official is also our zoning enforcement official. The first thing that official looks at is the zoning and then looks at the building code to make sure that the application is compliant with both. There's nothing taking away from that typical process. And then, uh, there's a comment on page eight about parking. And actual conditions require more than minimum parking. So Mr. Whiteside's advocating for making requirements more restrictive than what's in the current zoning. I don't think that there's a place in the ADU bylaw to address perceived shortfalls in the zoning elsewhere. We already have parking requirements in the zoning code. And it requires a certain number of parking spaces per dwelling unit depending upon which residential zone the property is located in. And as I said before, the building commissioner is a zoning enforcement officer. Will make sure that the parking is required in the parking by, in the bylaws are met. Same thing for screening of parking. If, we don't currently require homeowners to screen their parking. Some people have five cars in their, in their, on their property. There's no screening requirement. Some people have two, some have one. There is no requirement for that elsewhere. Why is the ADU so special that it needs to have that added? If there's more than, if there's parking for more than five, then there are restrictions and there are requirements and, and plans are required to be submitted by a registered sign professional. And on page twelve, the bottom of page twelve. Um, I'll just read, however, some of the people believe that amendment of the existing bylaw is not an adequate solution. And that entirely new zoning is required, scope of which would be well beyond the scope of the town's temporary apartment zoning. The revised article reflects their view. The result is an entirely new zoning proposal to allow open occupancy, market rate apartments, which would be assigned to homeowners first come, first served, without any provision for elderly homeowners, their caregivers, or their families. Their idea in the intent is expressed in the intent of this ADU. And it is intentionally, um, changing things that are, uh, currently in the temporary apartment. We want to increase the range of housing choices. We want to encourage a more efficient use of our housing stock. We want to allow housing and provide housing that's appropriate to households at various stages of life. We want to encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens. And we want to help the town meet its housing needs while at the same time not distracting from its historic character and existing patterns. So the only way we can accomplish this is by modify and provide, not necessarily modify the temporary apartment, but to submit the article that we have. And the last thing I'd like to say is, an ADU will only get built if a homeowner wants one. And each homeowner will have their own reasons for wanting to do so. Some who think that the special permit process is the best way have to recognize that that's a, a public meeting, open process. This is, it might be a very private reason that someone wishes to build the ADU. And having an open public process to describe why they wish to do it is a deterrent for people uh, seeking this opportunity. So I just wanted to, um, share those comments. And, and I do thank Mr. Whiteside for providing his comments.
Okay, um, thank you. I, I didn't want to, uh, I wanted to give you the floor so you could go over your comments, uh, about um, Alex's comments because I, I, I wanted to respect, um, Rich that it got confusing when we were all talking at once. Um, but I did want to, um, point to, it's my page ten, but it's, um, the use and dimensional requirements section, the, need, need amendment. And he has one, two, three. The third provision, he mentions the floor area of an ADU shall be no more than nine hundred square feet of one-third of the floor area. And then later, it, it says one-half of the floor area of the principal dwelling unit. Was, was the intention to be one-half in both places?
It's one-half. I talked to the town council about it. It's a typo.
Okay, so we're able to fix that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, um, I could jump back. Um, sorry. Wrong document.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my page number is anywhere with my comments inserted, so I'm sorry if that threw off the
Oh, no, that's okay. We were one page off. I find, I, I caught up with you. Um, but, uh, so I, it's my page number. Hold on. Yeah. Uh, my page number six. Um, so there would be one park, so in the C district, resident C, there would be one parking space for the main house and one for the accessory dwelling unit in the resident C lot. There shall be one parking space for each of the two units. But that's what would be required.
Yeah, so if the resident C, one spot per unit is inadequate, then that needs to be looked at in overall for the resident C. It, and, you know, if, um, they want to look at this sort of equitably, right?
But in, in resident C, where it's already, that's East Milton, that's Tucker neighborhood, that's the, that's the town center neighborhood. That's, um, you know, that's, remember our very first meeting, we had people come in from Tucker neighbor area, like Concord, that area. And they said they were really concerned about that. They already have issues where the cars are parking on street and snowplows can't get through and so forth. And they, they have, you know, people parking on lawns over there already. There's already a, a density to that, to that area. And, and we already know. So, so we already have, uh, parking issues over there. And now we're saying you can have one spot for the house, which they probably already have. Maybe they already have one for the house and one for the, but they're adding an ADU, they're adding a dwelling unit. So that, that's a concern.
One thing I would say, Denny, is, uh, they, they, um, they would have to demonstrate, you know, with their application, that they meet zoning and they meet building permit, you know, like I said before. So my sense of the building department, they would need a way to verify that it meets zoning, which would be a site plan which shows the parking. Um, but the, um, it may be that residents sees, it's difficult to, to meet the zoning requirements and do an ADU. It depends on the particular property.
Well, most of us over here only have driveways that are one car wide. You know, and you just have to move your cars around all the time. I mean, that's kind of the way life is in East Milton.
Okay. All right.
The But if there's a feeling that there's an inadequacy in the resident C district, then that's something that should be looked at more broadly, I, I guess is the larger point.
Well, there is. I mean, we've heard it again and again. I've been on the planning board for five years and we've heard it over and over and over again. So I mean, we know that that, we know that it's inadequate and now we're saying that we can just put more units in and not add. You know, if it said, if it said, if the language said that there was some determination that there would be adequate parking because maybe it's only one person that lives in the house and one person that lives in the unit and they only need two cars and I would be fine with it. But there's, but it's silent. It just refers it to, you just need one parking space for each unit. But we don't know if there's five people living in one side and three people living in the other unit. Um, and, and they would actually really need more parking because we don't want them going on the street, parking on the street overnight and snowplows not getting through.
Even if they don't all have cars.
Well, uh, all I'm saying is the, the language, it doesn't say adequate. It doesn't say you have to provide adequate parking. It just says you only have to provide one per unit. And we don't know that that's adequate and we know that there's a problem over there. Um, the other thing on
Denny, can I ask a quick question to you? Sorry. To interrupt, but I, I can't see what you guys are going through. It's not being shared, so I just, I'm curious, like how, what, what are you going through and?
Oh, sorry, this is the Alex Whiteside. Um, he sent us a eleven-page memorandum on the zoning article with comments.
What, what, what parts are you gonna end up going through? I just, I'm curious, because I haven't spoken either yet and I just wanted to make sure we all get a chance to.
Okay. Yep, that's fair. Um, all right, well, I mean, I, I, I could talk about Alex's comments. I, I have a lot of them, but I also want to give other people the opportunity to speak, but I
But respectfully, point of order, Chair, is that this is just a confirmatory public hearing. We are not making substantial changes to the bylaw. Uh, we had a public hearing for an article that we've already submitted to the select board and is already on the warrant.
So You have no interest in addressing the parking issue?
I don't think we can. That's not the, that's not where we are in this process. We submitted an article and town council just said that we needed to do a confirmatory public hearing. So that jurisdictionally, I don't think we have, this is not the point of time where we can make amendments. We can fix the typo, but we can't make amendments to the zoning at this point. We've submitted the article already. The select board has it. It's on the warrant.
Okay. Well, the only thing I would point out now is that anything that would be suggested as a something different than what's in the warrant would have to come through the uh, warrant committee as their recommendation, which has been done before. Um, you know, that the planning board has asked them to consider, but, um, I think, uh, we'd have to look at, at what, how extensive they, um, it would be for them to do that. I mean, I, I do note that they voted, um, I watched both their meeting on the tenth and on the eighteenth. And I noted that they voted, uh, on the eighteenth. Um, to send it back to the planning board for further study. Um, I, um, so I don't know whether they have an opportunity to reconsider their recommendation in terms of any changes that you might want to ask them to consider. But
Meredith has her hand up. Meredith had her hand up for a while, so.
Okay, Meredith?
Okay. So I just, uh, cause I, Rich, really, I want Rich Beeler to speak, but I just wanted to address, um, the special permit. Um, I think there was, there, there just was some comments that it had to do with approving the person that would move into the, to the unit. And that's not at all the case. What, what special permit is, it informs the neighbor of a change of use from single family to an accessory, to having accessory dwelling. So it's about the use. It has nothing to do with the qualifications or who the person is. That would, that wouldn't even be a, a part of the discussion. It's all about the change of the use. Um, this notification is to allow input. If there might be issues, who knows if it could be something environmental? Who knows what it could be? Um, each property is unique and in no way would the building commissioner necessarily be aware of something that maybe the owners, uh, neighbors might be aware of. So it's about the change of use. It's not who's living there. And so I just, that's really important to, to recognize. And the last thing that I have, um, because I think we can, if there are, if there are significant things that we're missing here, I don't think we need to rush, I don't think we need to absolutely put this through. If, if there's things that we can make it and improve it, I think we should, we should recognize it and do that. Um, so I guess one of the things that I just would want to just confirm is how is enforcement handled in the event of a violation of a by right within, within a single family household? Cause I, I'm not seeing the language there of how a building inspector would go about enforcing that. And I guess that's a question.
It's the same as it is for any kind of violation in, you know, of health and safety regulations.
Well, this wouldn't be, like, what about the, the owner, say, goes to Florida and they're supposed to be there for six months and they, they end up saying, you know what, we, we love it here. We're, we're just traveling and we're not going to come back and they, they're, they're absent, absentee owners. How, how is that addressed?
As I said, somebody wants to sort of do a, you know, send around a bed check or whatever to see who's, you know, have they've changed their address? I mean, as soon as they change their address and they change their voting, because people moving to Florida
Need to, yeah, they might not need
Would they want to be able to, you know, vote and, and be residents in Florida so they don't have to pay taxes in Massachusetts? We're gonna know that.
Yeah, I think one thing that I would, uh, point out is that the, um, the building commissioner is a zoning enforcement officer. And so if one feels as if there's a zoning, uh, violation, they would contact the building department. And I know that he, um, in the past, um, they hired a zoning enforcement officer in the last couple of years to help with this matter because there were enough concerns raised or, or, um, people contacting the building department about zoning violations. And it required, uh, it requires someone to, um, to be in court quite a bit. And so that was taking a lot of his time and that's why the zoning, um, of, um, enforcement officer was hired. So that's, it would be handled in the same way as any other zoning violation is handled.
Um, I had a question, um, too. Um, I was looking at the Pioneer, um, the study and I noticed that a lot of other towns had language requiring that the architecture be in harmony with the existing house. So when you do a detached ADU or you do an addition, it's in harmony. And it just led me to wondering about the granny flats and cottages that, you know, you see these little houses. Sure you've seen, seen, seen them out there. And I was wondering, you know, would those be required to be in harmony with the architecture of the main house?
We still have, we have that language that it's meant to look like that. Those tiny houses and granny house. I mean, the problem, some of those things don't have foundations, which is not what we're allowing. Um, you can't move a mobile home in the backyard and call that an ADU. Um, it's got to be hooked up to, you know, town sewer and water. Um, you know, it's got to be hooked up to utilities. Um, so the idea that you're sort of moving, you know, this converted, um, you know, truck, whatever into the backyard, then those tiny house shows, I've seen a bunch of them. Um, you know, I'd like, oh, I could put the boat in the backyard and just live in that. Um, but, um, those are not, um, you know, permitted under this bylaw.
But, but like the granny flat, granny flats would be allowed, but they'd somehow have to be in harmony with the, with the main house.
Yeah, I mean, they, they can look like anything, you know, have to, you know. They have to look, you know, as said, we're trying, we have said in the bylaw that it's, you know, supposed to still look like, you know, the rest of the neighborhood.
So it could look like two separate style houses, just because they
Just their own. Um, But they'd be, yeah, but they would be, you know, of similar, uh, you know, similar look. Um, you know, you wouldn't be doing a, you know, Buckminster Fuller, you know, dome thing or a yurt. Probably wouldn't really work in most parts of town. But I'd leave that to the architect to answer that question.
Now, what about the, the placement? Like if you had a granny flat coming in and, and the placement would be, you know, you had a big front setback, could you put, could you put one in the front yard? I mean, as long as it was within the setbacks? If you, if your house was set way back, you know, a lot of these older houses like on Canton Avenue, they're set way back. And there's a, they would have space, more space in the front than they would have in the back. Could granny flats end up in the front yards?
Well, it says that they have to be subordinate to the main house, so.
Could be to the side, maybe?
Well, in the olden days of the Hemingway estate, you know, there was, there were carriage houses that, you know, there were barns, there were gatehouses. All of those places had apartments in them. Um, you know, we represented the Hemingway family. I've been in like five of those houses. Um, and so, you know, that's what, that's what those were for and that's, people lived in them, you know, a hundred years ago. Um, so I say if it complies with zoning and it's harmonious with the neighborhood and they have to get a special permit for those, that's not something that gets done as a right.
All right. Um, all the
All the more reason the Board of Appeals should have at least one architect on it.
As our zoning bylaw requires.
My plug for that.
I, I haven't jumped in, but I, I do wanna speak.
Please do.
Alright, um, so yeah, no, thank you. And I'm not gonna read, I don't wanna repeat a lot that I've said in, in prior meetings. And I do agree with a lot of things they've been saying on this board. Um, and I really appreciate the folks that called in and, and talked. I mean, obviously, um, we had a public hearing. Uh, we heard a lot of comments. Um, I think we've incorporated a lot into this. I think there was a lot of newer comments on this one. Um, and I really appreciate some of those comments. But the thing I do wanna say, cause I, I think this has kind of been said, but I wanna just say it again. Um, so forty B laws, right? They're in place for a reason. They're in place for, because cities and towns are not being looked at as moving or advancing quick enough, right? Or not doing anything. And so we got forty B laws. This is not a forty B law, but what I would suggest, that if we don't do accessory dwelling units and we don't do this now and we keep kicking the can, I think some people said decades. Um, look what's happening. I was just in California yesterday. I'm in Tennessee now, that's why I'm not in camera. I'm in my hotel room. Um, but I mean, I was, I was talking to somebody that's on a planning board there, just didn't realize they were, but I work with them. And they were, they said, well, Google this. I mean, California just put in place accessory dwelling units as a right in the entire state. Right? And so this is what we're seeing in other states following suit. I think it was also mentioned that Massachusetts was looking at this. They're putting these things in place because cities and towns aren't doing anything. And, you know, we're in a pretty bad place in this town and I, I wanna see some advancement. And I think there was a lot of comments from folks and I thought they were really good. And I'll be honest, I do, so the thing here is, I do agree, we're here to either pass or deny what we've already put forward. We can't change it. However, I personally have made like a change in my mind. I'd like to see somebody at town meeting come on the floor and remove the, the cap. I actually do not think that, I didn't think it was needed before because I'm a data person. I work in engineering and I'm a data person. And so we've had the town planner and the assistant planner look at other towns. They've done a lot of research and what we're seeing with the folks that either have caps or don't have caps, they're not, they're not reaching those caps. They're just, you're not seeing hundreds and thousands of units. I mean, it's just, it's not reality. And so I know that folks are worried about it, but for me to hear that, and I'm not an expert here. But for me to hear that there is a diversity issue with an arbitrary cap, just because we wanna put it in place, cause it makes us feel better. Bother me that we made that decision. It bothers me that I made that decision. And so I would welcome somebody standing up at town meeting and making that change. I would welcome, I would support it. And so I know that we're gonna keep talking about different portions of what's in there. But we literally are only here tonight to either approve or deny what we already approved. So, I mean, I would like to move that we take a vote um, to approve as, as we had put forward in the past. I don't know what word we'd use and how you wanna put it through. I'm kinda tired. Um, but I'd like to move it forward. And, and I think it, personally, I think this deserves to go to town meeting. We are not approving this bylaw. We are approving it so the town gets a voice. I don't understand why anybody wouldn't want that to happen. There's gonna be way more people in that room, hundreds, that are gonna make the final decision, not us. I think we've done our due diligence. I think we've done our, the due diligence for the town to weigh options, listen to the public and make an, an informed decision. So that's my opinion.
You're here. Alright, so, um. And if that was emotional, second it. Okay, does, does somebody want to make a formal motion?
Well, I mean, and then we can talk about. We just need the motion to close the public hearing.
I thought we did that. We already did that.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay. So, um, I, I don't think that, I don't think there's any other motion that we need to make. We're just, we, we've already sent it to the select board. We could make another motion, I suppose, to confirm.
To confirm.
To confirm, you know, to confirm the submission of the warrant article on accessory dwelling units as previously submitted to the um, select board with the correction of the typographical error on the um, half, one-half, one-third um, area of the existing house. So it's consistently one-half.
Okay, um, Tim, I just wanna confirm, is that the vote that you believe needs to be taken? Is Tim Truansky still with us?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's, I think that'll work.
Okay, um, did somebody want to second that motion? Okay, so now we can discuss, um. I, I, there were a lot of things that came up and I just made my notes and I, I kinda see, I can read the tea leaves, so I know where this is going. But, um, in, in response to the idea about eliminating the cap. When the, when we had a cap of ten, I didn't feel, I mean, Rick Neely has been coming to us for the last year and a half mentioning the, the importance of impact studies. But when it was limited to ten, I, I said, well, it would only be ten a year. I know that would be a hundred and ten years. But I wasn't as worried as, uh, about doing the impact analysis studies. Although, um, but if you take the cap away, we haven't done the impact analysis studies that he mentioned.
We can't. We can't.
We're not taking it away now, Denny.
We can't do that. We just, we just can't.
That's a town meeting.
I understand that, but I just wanted, okay, I just need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, yeah, I get it, sorry.
No, that's fine. I know, I know you're not taking.
I just wanna make sure you didn't think I was pushing for that. I, I, however, I'm sorry, I'll rephrase. I was pushing for it, but not for us.
Okay, and, and I just wanted to say, the, the public picked up on this because there had been discussion about removing the, the cap of ten. So then, you know, there's this discussion like, why is everybody so afraid there could be so many? If you remove the cap of ten, if, if it's, if there's a cap of ten, why, why are people afraid they're gonna be everywhere? Well, in other towns, they have other limits. They have limits to lot size, to house size or to house age even. Some ADUs in some towns, they say, oh, you can do these in houses that are older or you can do it in this zone, but not that zone. So there are limits in other towns and other towns have less than ten. But we decided to limit it by ten because we didn't know. And I, I knew that later on it could be lifted at some point, depending on how many we got. But I very much appreciated that cap of ten, so, um. So, but I just. Can I just make a point on the lifting? Because that's something I've seen in public comment. That change would only come through another vote of town meeting. I just want people to understand. Any zoning change, any zoning change might originate with us, but it only can be done at town meeting. Let's just be clear. So that, the only way that cap could be lifted would be another article at some point in time. And that's approved by town meeting. Okay, um, the, the other challenge that I have is that, you know, we, we say we wanted to go to town meeting so town meeting can decide. And I, I, I appreciate that. I'm a town meeting member and, and I take, I take it very seriously. Um, but we can't really assume that, that town meeting members will have options. Because as we've learned and as we already knew, the other option is out of scope. So, you know, um, you know, if you put it forward in its current form, you know, it cre- creates these plateaus of issues that just make it difficult. So like the first plateau could be the as-of-right, um, you know, special permit debate. So if you want a special permit, you can't say, well, I'm gonna vote for a special permit. You can only vote, I don't want this article. So, so then you have those people. Then you have a second plateau. And then you have people who are divided about having open market rate rental. Um, if, if you want open market rate rental, then you vote yes. But if you, if you wanted to be geared toward family and caregivers, they can't vote for family and caregivers. They have to say, well, that's out of scope, so we can't put that forward. So they can only vote no. And then the third plateau is the limit of ten. So now you have this option of ten. You have some people who wanna take that off of the, you know, so you're gonna have a big debate about that. So this is a very complicated, you know, there's a lot of pieces to this. And then the more people you talk to, the more pieces there are. Those are the biggies that I've picked out of the letters and all the, you know, correspondence and phone calls and things that I've received. But I just think it's not, we're saying that town meeting has a choice, but they really kind of don't have. I mean, really, I think the only choice that's not out of scope to change on town meeting floor is the cap. So the cap could be eliminated, but that's, I don't know that the other things can happen. So it's not really like we are giving them a choice. We're just saying, take, take, take what we're offering you. And maybe we'll take the cap off on town meeting floor, but, so it's not really, it's just take it or leave it, so. But one thing I would say, Denny, is if people, town meeting members, I'd like, um, town meeting members to have a um, ability to learn about the article in advance, because then if they do want to make uh, motions to amend. You know, they're gonna have to submit those in advance and they'll be, will be able to find out, or they will be able to find out if they're considered to be out of scope. But I think educating town meeting in advance, you know, is really important. I know that when we did the Milton Village, um, and I received several emails from town meeting members with questions that just, you know, clarifying questions and, um, that we responded to. Um, and I, I think it, it helped the process. So I would like, um, the document that I read from tonight to be distributed to the warrant. I mean, if everyone agrees that the language in it, but be distributed to uh, the warrant committee, uh, the select board and to town meeting members through the clerk if possible, because um, zoning language itself is not always clear what we're trying to accomplish. And so I think explaining it is helpful. And then if people do have particulars like that, they say, well, I support part of it, but not the other part. And there's enough sentiment at town meeting that is in agreement with that, then their, a, a motion to send it back to the planning board may be warranted. But, you know, that's, that's the debate that town meeting will need to have. Okay, I would have to study that. I had so many materials coming in the last couple of days that I, I wasn't able to study your document. I did read it through with you tonight, but I, I, I'm, I need to, but we have a little while before town meeting, so. I, I'd be happy to look at that maybe next week, um, report back to you at our next meeting. We could put it on the agenda.
I think the sooner we do that, I mean, the best. So if you could put it on the, for the next agenda item for the next meeting to approve it and get it sent out, cause I think that, um, there's so much misinformation wandering around that. Not surprising, of course.
We have a meeting, um, we have a meeting on the sixteenth, uh, after the Dodson Flinker thing.
Yes.
That would, and are we, right now, town meeting scheduled for March, um.
Fourteenth, I think?
I, I would, I, I would say, I, I, that meeting is not really set up for this type of business. I, I mean, we're using Dodson and Flinker Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's only for the design standards, right?
Yeah, it's kind of a special purpose meeting.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so, uh, well, the meeting after that is, um.
The twenty-fourth?
So maybe what we, like, if I can suggest, Denny, that if everybody takes a look at it, if they have particular questions or comments, if they're extensive then maybe put it on the agenda, but if they're not, maybe we can handle it through Tim. Okay, that's fair. I thi- I think that's okay. Alright, um, okay, so we have.
So we have a motion.
Motion, and we have a second. Um, did anybody wanna discuss it further?
No.
Okay, um, alright. So, um, we'll do a vote. I mean, I, I, I did think that there were language issues that I think, I, I just don't feel that it's ready. At, at the parking in Zone C alone is, 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 is an issue. I, I do think that Alex brought up a lot of, Mr. Whiteside brought up a lot of, you know, issues that, that will leave it vulnerable. So, um, so, um, so how do we do the vote? I'm blanking here.
We just take the vote.
Okay. So the more, so the, so the yes is, it goes to, to select work, okay. So. It's already there, so it's. So it's just affirming that, that we still want that language to move forward or to be the recommendation.
With the one amendment.
With the one amendment from tonight.
With the one correction to the typo.
Okay, alright, Cheryl Tocaius?
Yes.
Rich Bealer?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swinson, no. Meredith?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one more topic tonight. And I wanted to thank all the speakers for coming in tonight. I think they added so much to this discussion. A lot of new voices and a lot of new points and, um, this was a really tough one. So thank you. Thank you for all participating. This is gonna be an interesting meeting, town meeting. Thank you. Good night. Um, so we had one last thing on our agenda and that was, um, there is a forty B meeting. It's the final ZBA meeting on Thursday. So it's two days from now on the East Milton Forty B. And, um, Meredith had suggested, um, that we put a few comments together. We don't have time to do a letter, but I would be happy, I've been watching the ZBA tapes, I'd be happy to go and, and speak. Um, and, and just, um, you know, Meredith had mentioned the bollards. Uh, if we could have some bollards, I wanted to look up some of the language on, um, the, um. Lighting, um, dark sky compliant lighting recommendation. Meredith, had you suggested, um?
So, yeah, so when, when I was listening to that, um, with that last meeting, it sounds like they were open. They, their sidewalk, sidewalk lighting, there's minimal lighting on the building. There's no lighting on the balconies, um, on that project. Um, minimal lighting around the doorway entrances, but they are gonna be doing sidewalk, um, street lighting. And I wanted to provide an example. I think they sort of asked Tim and he wasn't, um, quite prepared. But, but I thought, um, if we could give them examples such as Fifty Elliott Street, what they did along the streetscape. Uh, it would be a great improvement, um, just sort of to the, to the curb appeal in that area, to give some nice soft lighting. Um, and I was thinking if we, if, um, the planning department could pull the specs maybe on Fifty Elliott. That would be a really nice example of sort of, um, complementary historic lighting, uh, that would be appropriate in that area. And the other thing that was discussed is how danger, dangerous it is for pedestrians along Franklin Street. That currently the trucks actually pull up on the curb and neighbors actually have to walk into the street to walk around the trucks as they are unloading. I think it's really, um, I think they, there was talk, I think, um. Way back, probably about, about bollards sort of being a protective way that, um, protects, you know, prevents trucks from pulling up on that curb. Especially if we're adding a lot of density, um, with the residents. So that would be really nice to actually have that as a protection, so cars wouldn't swerve or, you know, it's, it's a really narrow street on Franklin Street. So I would love to, to see us ask for that. And then I think we also really need to address the height on that project, um, and the density is that, you know. And, and how disproportionately out of scale it is relative to the neighboring properties. So I think, I think that should be addressed, um, coming from our planning board.
I mean, we, we could, um. We, we could mention, um, some other similar projects, um, other mixed-use projects. Um, it just.
But it's, it's not mixed-use.
Yeah.
And. Not mixed-use, so, yeah, it's.
Yeah, mixed-use.
But I think, so I think that the relation, um, to the neighboring, um, other, other structures.
We, yeah, we had said that, you know, on, on, all along, but they've already, I mean, this is their last hearing. They're, they're not redesigning anything. So, you know, really, at this point, what you would be, I, I'm sorry, it's just speaking from my experience as council. Is that at this point, what you'd be saying is what can, what kind of conditions can we put in? It's too late to talk about the sort of design changes we would make, but your point about the bollards, your point about safety, the trucks. All those kinds of things are the sort of conditions that if it had come to us as a special permit or site plan approval, we, we would have put in. Um, and so that's kind of what the board is looking for at this point from us, is that what kinds of conditions would, uh, would. If we're not a planning board and we don't have any architects on our, our zoning board, so what kinds of things would we put in as conditions? Um, remembering, of course, that you can't, you don't wanna put in conditions that make the project uneconomic, cause it just heads off to DHCD and will lose. Um, so, but I think, I mean, I, it's definitely the points about the lighting and the points about the, um, you know, historic lighting and the lighting and the, and the truck safety and other kinds of things like that, I think would be very helpful to the zoning board.
I really, I like the bollard idea a lot, Meredith, you know, um. You know, when some of my travels, um, uh.
You know, when some of my travels, that's used commonly in cities with very narrow sidewalks. And it's effective for channeling the pedestrians and, you know, sort of keeping the conflicts minimized. So I, I do like that. I don't know, I haven't been able to watch that recently. I, I, I will, I can try and tune in on Thursday. But some things that we normally look at also would be like how they're handling pickup and drop-off and trash and so forth. I know they're doing some of that in the back. Is any, is the trash within the building or is it outside? And is it screened if it's outside?
I think it's inside. I think it's inside. The last time I think I looked at the plans.
And then we were looking at the landscaping around the parking lot before and what the interface was like between the parking lot and the, I forget the name of the alleyway there that connects Adams and Bassett Street. So I don't know if you know, you remember what that looks like, Meredith? But, you know, if there was some, we, we had talked about activation of that, you know, even though it's an alley, then there could be some pedestrian activation there. I don't know if that's been followed up on. I'm just kind of going from memory of what our comment letter said, you know, that were things that could.
I, I thought they were doing some sort of like Bocchi Court or some kind of.
So the, 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 the plans to, to activate Adams Court are kind of out the window. There were a lot of questions raised about ownership of, of either side of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't kind of worth the hassle. The Board of Appeals has requested a bollard treatment on Franklin Street, so I think they appreciate the backup from the planning board. I think that would be a good and very helpful comment for them.
Hey, Tim, sorry to interrupt. I gotta jump off the call. I'm, I'm actually in a cab now, so sorry about that, guys.
But in theory, you're, you're, okay, bye.
Meredith, could we, could we touch base tomorrow? Just, I, I want to make sure I'm super clear on, on what you're looking for from 50 Elliott Street.
Yeah, I think we can send out the specs and, and it's, it's, if you, if you walk along, yeah, Elliott Street. But I'll, I think we should have those on file.
Yeah, are you, are you talking about the sidewalk lighting or the sort of?
The sidewalk, yeah, the sidewalk.
Got it.
And you might also be able to check 131 Elliott. Because they have street lighting and parking lot lighting that we, we looked at and coordinated.
And then I didn't know if anybody had any thoughts about the restaurant. They're, they, they're going to lose the parking, and then they're going to have to, the restaurants are going to have to come back to the planning board, but for the, for the permit.
You can't park in that lot anyway, for the restaurant.
Abbey Park does.
No, Abbey Park, you can't park back there.
Where the building is, that's Abbey Park's parking.
No, that's where I've been parking. When I go to Abbey Park, that's where I park.
Yeah, I know, I mean, that's, that's always been like a private lot that you couldn't, nobody could go near and, and.
They lease it, they lease it to Abbey Park. Falcone leases, but they have a lease for, I believe it's 34 spots, but that's.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's site plan approval from the planning board and their special permit from the Board of Appeals specifically calls out for Franklin Street as a, as a place for, I think, 32 dinnertime spaces. So they're going to have to amend both of those approvals. That's going to be a interesting conversation for the planning board.
Yeah, that's going to come back to us. So what do we do? Yeah, I mean, if they don't have parking, then they, it could close them down. And the developer didn't care at all. They just said, well, then you have to close it down.
Abbey Park is in the process of, they are looking for another site for parking. I'm not sure where.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, I, I'd be looking at the Santander Bank saying, can we take it by eminent domain and put a parking garage? They've just decided not to give mortgages anymore. I'm thinking they're probably not that busy over there. But, yeah, I, you know, it's just, I, I mean, I, I guess, I, I don't worry, but I don't know about the parking because I always walk there.
Yeah, I noticed during the day that businesses use it, and then at night, the restaurant can use it. That's my read, but I'm, I'm, I'm not the native over there. I'm always the guest over there, so. Okay, so if that's okay, Meredith and I, or I could go bring, bring the comments over about the lighting, landscaping. I'll take, I'll take a look at the, at the last two meetings and just see if there's anything else that we might be able to offer as conditions. I'm, I'm sorry, we've all been so jammed. We, we didn't get a chance to really write a letter or anything, but.
Well, we had in the beginning and.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. There, there's been so many 40Bs, it's like, oh my God. Okay, so.
So Danny, if I just could ask Tim, is there anything in particular that you think that the Board of Appeal besides the bollards would be interested in hearing from the board about?
Um, I mean, I, I, I think some of those kind of sidewalk level kind of issues, you know, with the lighting, with the bollards, I think those are both two kind of well-taken issues. You know, I, I, I think there's still, and then they, they've submitted some additional materials based on kind of recent feedback. You know, there, there's still kind of questions, concerns, you know, about their transportation demand management program. I think, you know, they're, you know, you, you know, with 40B, our, our hands are kind of tied in, in, in certain ways. And I, I think what the board is trying to encourage them to do is, is to really think critically about, you know, limiting single occupancy vehicle trips using every possible trick at their disposal. It is a constrained site, you know, the, the parking that they've got is the parking that you're going to get. And so if people think that isn't sufficient, then you've got to figure out a way to sort of limit vehicle trips. So, but, you know, any kind of encouragement or ideas in sort of that regard, I think would be, you know, would be appreciated. And then I think, you know, just the, the sort of, you know, underscoring the importance, and then this isn't necessarily a, a sort of a condition or a design intervention or anything, just underscoring the importance of, you know, it is, it's a tight district. And, you know, you've got to be able to, just like any other project, handle your, your loading and, and your, your business, you know, on your site. Because that's a, a constant refrain that we hear every single time. We even whisper the words East Milton, you know, in these proceedings is, you know, parking, loading, congestion. You know, so they've got to just, you know. Again, it's not a specific dish, but just underscoring the point that it's a really important issue and people in the board should really be on top of it.
Yeah, I noticed that in the discussion, they really need to deal with the traffic. All the parking issues have to be addressed on-site because there's nowhere for it to go. And then they also have the same issue with the stormwater. They really have to keep it all on that site, which is very hard because it's, it's kind of downhill and they have water, seasonal water, so, hey, yeah, they've got a handful there. Okay, but I mean, that's what we require, stormwater needs to be dealt with on-site and any traffic or any parking needs to be dealt with on-site. But that's pretty standard for all of our projects, right? Any new projects we do?
Well, the, the stormwater, at least that's peer-reviewed and the traffic typically is peer-reviewed. So I'm, the architecture, I know it's peer-reviewed. I haven't read the most recent letter. I started to, didn't, got distracted on something else. But I will try and take a look at that as well, as well as the new plans.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your, both of you for offering to do that meeting. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, and if you guys think of comments, you can send them to us or you could send them to us through Tim, but I'm, I'm happy to receive them directly if, if you think of anything.
I'll try to take a look, but I, I gotta, I'm doing that NBTA Communities thing on, on, on Thursday, meeting at REVA to sort of explain what that's all about, so. I'll come back to you with the report.
Okay.
Can you recirculate that info on that meeting someone?
Sure.
Thank you. The MBTA Communities.
That's a, that's a real estate bar association. I, I don't know, I don't know whether you can sign up.
Oh, no, all right. There was, I thought there was something else that I saw. Am I imagining things? That there was something, explain the MBTA Communities.
Maybe from Chappa?
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, there's a YouTube video. I think there's actually a YouTube video that there, we were. So, yeah, so I was going to try to go and watch that too.
That's what I was thinking. He had a, DHCD had a webinar that's been posted, it's kind of the, the roadshow that they've been doing. So, you know, that's, it's kind of probably the latest and greatest that you're going to hear. So I, I can disseminate that link as well if, if.
And Tim, can you send us the actual language of the, the legislature, the bill?
Yeah, the, the web, that, actually what I'll do is I'll send, I'll send the DHCD website. They have a specific MBTA community site that has all of the guidelines, all the legislation, all the technical assistance, all the webinar. So I'll just redistribute that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it. That's our last agenda item.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I, I'm in favor, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Danny Swinson, good night.
Okay, good night.
Bye-bye. Have a good night.